Good morning. Want to welcome all of you to the November 15, 2022 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and want to thank all who've joined us this morning, both in person and those who have been joining remotely. As we get started, we're going to have our clerk, Flo Evans, call the roll, establish a quorum, read some announcements into the record, and then we'll move into the agenda. I know we have a pretty full agenda today. We have some presentations and guests in the audience. We also have a number of items that are going to be scheduled, hearing items. So with that, I'll turn to Ms. Evans. Good morning, Flo. Please call the roll.
Morning.
And I'll let you make the announcements in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, November 18th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and centers for disease control and prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call for off-agenda matters. When the chairperson calls for your name, please come to the podium to make your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff or assistants or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Flo. If you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any announcements? I know we had had one request for an off-agenda. I don't see the party and audience yet, Flo, so we'll kind of gauge that as we go through the day.
I'm sorry, Mr. Natoli. I was sorry.
We had a request from Father Madigan to address the Board. I don't see him yet here in the audience, so we'll hold that and see if he arrives later this morning.
Okay.
I know it was just a request to address the Board off-agenda. All right. With that, then, we do have one off-agenda speaker signed up in the audience, and we have others on the phone. So, Mr. Harris, Ryan.
Good morning. So, last time I was in these chambers, I had mentioned, I talked about how you guys approved military weapons without knowing what they do, and the sheriffs didn't really know what they do, but you still gave them ability to use them. And I had mentioned that same day you guys approved them, the sheriffs killed a member of our community. I was given his name, and it's Jaime Neronho, and he was 55. So, I just wanted to say that. At the last meeting, I wasn't able to make it up here, but I called in, and this just continues to show that you guys are incurred on your own policies and you guys don't do, you know, what you're supposed to, uphold your job duties. So, I'm going to call the call-in line so you guys can see what people at home trying to call in experience.
You reached Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Public comment line. There are 54 items on the agenda. Please enter the agenda item number on which you would like to comment and press pound. If you're commenting on an item not on the agenda, please enter item zero and press pound.
My comment's not on the agenda, so I'm going to do as instructed, enter zero.
Please enter. Public comment for that agenda item is closed. Please try another agenda item.
Public comment for that agenda item is closed. So, if that's what it said, if you didn't hear it, I pressed zero because that's what the prompt instructs me to do. I'd really appreciate it. I wonder how many people were trying to call in and couldn't get through because they did as instructed and pressed zero, and they keep getting told.
Okay, Ryan, I pause the time here. Flo, did you want to say something? Ms. Evans, did you want to say something?
I would. Would you please allow our office to get that corrected?
Sure.
And so, we could just leave the off-agenda comments open.
Okay, we will. Okay. Very good. Thank you for calling our attention, Ryan.
Yep.
We strive to do our best here and appreciate your call and your attention. So, Flo, we'll address that. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start the clock. You ready?
Yes, thank you. And as you have mentioned, you do strive to do your best. So, I do want to thank you. I sent an email in to Donna Tully and Supervisor Donna Tully, and you did get back to me. So, I do want to thank you for that. However, it was just in regards to me coming up here to speak. So, it's kind of selective on what you want to get back to me about, you know, the real problems that I've given you guys. I don't get any replies on those, not just from you alone, from your peers as well. So, also, I've tried to submit the items that I feel you guys should review as far as what's happened to me while working for the county. And you guys had some people look over them. Everyone I've talked to that's looked over them said, "Now, Ryan, I really don't have time to read all this." Or they said a variation of that. Basically, they admitted that they're not going to read, and they have not read all the items that I brought to them to read as my submission, even though they're getting paid to do that job. To me, that doesn't seem right. So, you guys only give me three minutes. It's probably going to take me a long time, but I'll be coming up here sharing all these items with you guys, definitely. And I do want to note before I forget, I had some other things up here, but next meeting, I guess, is that I did find a job, so if you guys could cancel my food stamps, I'd appreciate it. And the reason I'm asking you to do so, and I could share the videos, every time I go up there, I'm harassed by the police officers. One I have on video, he said, "Why don't you smoke closer to the entry so that way we could see you?" And I had to inform him that there are children over there. Do you really want me to smoke next to those children? Oh, ha, 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 ha. So, at this point, you guys are even putting children in danger just to mess with me.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. All right. I don't have anybody else sign up an off-agenda. We'll keep the off-agenda open. I know that Flo stepped away just for Alma. Do we have any other callers on off-agenda?
I do not see any other callers in queue.
Okay. All right. With that, then, we'll go to our agenda. I know that the clerk has some items that we want to note in the record, then we'll go to the consent calendar and Board members as well. So, all right, Alma?
Yes, you have an addendum for consent. This is to approve a salary resolution amendment, SRA 2023-06B, and the Conflict of Interest Code to reallocate 24 FTE limited-term positions to permanent, add three FTE permanent positions, and increase two positions rate total of .5 FTE for the future of public health staffing. You have a public comment request, copy of report for approval of outstanding vendor claims invoiced, received by the clerk of the Board, and that's been posted to the web and distributed to the members. Item number nine, you are adopting a Sacramento County ordinance repealing and reenacting county building codes contained in code chapters 16.02, 16.04, 16.10, 16.20, 16.22, 16.23, 16.24, 16.28, 16.32, 16.34, 16.36, 16.37, 16.38, 39, 16.90, adding 16.41, 16.42, and deleting 16.08 and 4.58. Adopting an ordinance repealing and reenacting county fire prevention code contained in chapter 17.04, waifful reading and continued from November 8, 2022, item number 18. And then, item number 12, you are introducing an ordinance and continuing to December 6th, excuse me. This is for PLMP 2020-00156, Housing Trust Fund Ordinance. Introduce an ordinance of the Sacramento County Code amending section 16.89.500 relating to applicability of the housing fee requirement. Waifful reading of the ordinance and continue to December 6, 2022 for adoption.
Okay. Thank you for all the 16 points, points, points. And we actually introduced it that relates to the Uniform Building Code and Uniform Fire Code and a number of amendments that were introduced at our last meeting. Okay. With that, then, let me go to my colleagues first to see on the consent calendar the items you wish to speak to. Supervisor, you on this?
I'll join you as chair on speaking to item three.
Okay, so item three, we'll call that one out. And then, also, I wanted to make some comments on item 21. Supervisor Frost, any items you wanted to call off the agenda? Okay. All right. With that, and do we have any speakers on any other items that wish to address any other consent items?
No, we don't.
Okay, good. Thanks, Flo. All right, so let's go ahead and call item number three.
Three. Item three, approve the American Rescue Plan Act district-directed funding allocations for District 5 to Women's Empowerment. Adopt a resolution authorizing agreements associated with the implementation of the approved funding allocation.
Okay. And I know my colleague wishes to speak to this as well. One, first, I want to thank county staff for their efforts to get this item, along with other American Rescue Plan Act items, before the Board. It's been no small task, and again, we've, you know, looked to support any number of community organizations, and certainly this one is in line with the broader policies that we adopted relative to housing and homelessness. And the item specifically is to make a grant award to the Women's Empowerment in the amount of $1,049,000. What I wanted to just speak to briefly, and I know I had a chance to talk with the county executive yesterday, and I want to, again, express thanks to the county staff, and I know we have Lisa Culp and some members of her Board from Women's Empowerment that are in the audience, supportive of the items before us. But I wanted to also make a point about, I think, the ability that we have, if we so choose and if the funding is available, to make a more significant contribution to the effort. The proposal that we actually received from Women's Empowerment was for a $3 million request that would have provided for housing, the lease rental for folks that are enrolled in the program, some of them who are virtually and are really homeless. I know that in some of the discussions I've had with Ms. Culp, she's, you know, one of the women that's enrolled in her program was a woman with four children living in her car, now enrolled in Women's Empowerment and housed along with her family members. And so, we have, again, families that are in distress, not unlike other individuals in this community. But the proposal that we received initially was to actually lease for a period of four years 24 cottages for women and children enrolled in the program who are rebuilding their credit history, getting workforce training, solidifying their family structures. And so, with additional dollars, and I'm going to suggest here in a moment that we at least consider from the same source of money, the American Rescue Plan Act monies, because it's consistent with our stated goals, we could provide for 80 families over the course of that four years, the housing, and would allow for new inventory. This would be units that, you know, aren't currently available or are available on a kind of a spot basis. And so, I'm going to suggest that we, again, we can't take action on it today, but we consider, and I know, again, we certainly had some money that's been roped off, may already be eyed for other projects that are in the pipeline, but the million dollars will provide for nine cottages for 25 families over the period of three years. But I think we can certainly make good use of additional dollars. And so, I wanted to put that out there, and I'll give my colleague a moment. And again, since the actual location where the cottages are being leased is in District 1, and I know Phil's been very interested in this project as well, so Phil, I'll turn to you for some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm certainly very supportive of this item. In fact, I think I was the one that planted the seed at one point that we might want to explore the prospect of a lease versus a purchase to make this project happen. I do want to ask a question, though, and I'm not sure that we have the appropriate executive team member in chambers to answer it, but because this would be a lease, and I know that the ARPA funds come with a ticking clock in terms of when we appropriate and when the funds need to be actually used, I just want to make sure that there's no prospect of this hitting a roadblock at some point because the lease obviously is going to occur over several years. So, Anne, I don't know if you're prepared to address that or not.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Serna. There shouldn't be a problem. This is a, as it stands right now, this is a three-year contract. We will be providing the money to Women's Empowerment, who will be leasing from Arden Acres, and we have until December of 2026 to expend all the funds, so there should be no problem in expending them by then.
Okay. In terms of the suggestion that the chair has made to fund the additional capacity, I'm certainly supportive of that and would be interested to know if we have the capability to use the general ARPA account to achieve that. But if there is any question about the availability of those funds, I would suggest, Mr. Chair, that, you know, the color of money here doesn't really matter, and if there's an issue with using ARPA funds, I think this is a supportable enough project based on the mission of Women's Empowerment and who would serve, to your point earlier about the women and their children that are currently living outside or in their cars, I think it's obviously important enough to, you know, have us explore other funding sources if necessary. So, again, I just want to thank Lisa and her Board and our staff as well, Emily and Siobhan and Anne, especially for, I think, being very creative in terms of how we make this happen. So, certainly prepared to make a motion if necessary or to make a second on this particular item. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Well, Anne, maybe to turn to you because, again, I think it's been suggested, and certainly what, oh, I see Supervisor Frost was punched up.
There's no regarding this.
Oh, he isn't? Okay. About whether or not, again, we certainly could draw upon another source to supplement because, again, I think the value is there as it relates both to the programmatic elements and to help folks who actually get long-term self-sufficiency through their enrollment in the program, but it's not a short stay. It's not temporary. It's folks that are moving out and up in their respective lives and, again, largely obviously women with children. And so, and I know you're familiar with the program. So, I guess the question would be, again, it's not for actionable item today, but the general ARPA pot of money and/or I, for one, would join Supervisor Serna, you know, we have general fund dollars in our homeless programs, and we use realignment dollars and other dollars. Obviously, it would be a conscious choice by this Board, but I would strongly support and suggest that that would be worth our consideration, and we have people in the audience who can speak to how that might, you know, play itself out, so.
Sure. First, let me start by saying I am one of the biggest Women's Empowerment supporters. I really do support their program, and Lisa can attest to that. And yes, we do have some homeless ARPA dollars still set aside, and what we would have to decide is what to not do, and we can certainly bring that to, back to you, telling you where, because it has to come from somewhere. All of the homeless money has been not formally allocated at the Board, but it's certainly earmarked for specific projects that we are working on, like Project Home Key and a couple of other things. So, we can bring that to you, and there'll be some decision points about what not to do instead. We do have general fund homeless money set aside, and the same would be true for that. We would decide what we won't do in order to do this, if that's your choice.
Phil.
Thanks. So, to your statement, and especially as it relates to the general fund, we've already appropriated for the fiscal year the entirety of our homeless funds for other projects. So, I just feel like what you said just gives us a Sophie's Choice, and I'm not interested in Sophie's choices here.
No, it has not been formally allocated, which I think I stated, but it is earmarked for projects. We have a lot of projects, and I'm not trying to make it Sophie's Choice, I'm just trying to be clear about what the options are. So, we have a lot of projects in the queue for both the general fund money and the ARPA money, and we have to make some choices, that's all.
If it was the will of the Board not to have to face sacrificing some other project or initiative that is under the rubric of what we're doing to serve our homeless population, I guess another option, Mr. Chair, could be a mid-year budget adjustment. Of course, that comes with a four-fifths vote requirement to perhaps look at our reserve or other contingency funds so that we don't have to sacrifice what arguably is our, you know, number-one mission right now, which is to serve our most vulnerable population.
So, I offer a suggestion because, again, the first-year funding is available, although to secure the units for, to have a commitment to secure them for the four years, would know the need to know there was appropriation, but you wouldn't need to spend the money this year. So, you could actually, the Board can make a decision if we chose. Obviously, it would be incumbent upon us to then follow through with, following budgets, but we could do it in another fiscal year because we've got the funding available that I think would carry it for the first year of the units, assuming that there was a policy choice here. Because I agree, I'm not interested in making a Sophie's Choice here. And, again, you know, we have lots of things that we've got in the works, but this is real. It's here and now. There's been a lot of work done, as you're well aware, and you stated that, Mr. Serna, in looking to try to make the purchase, but obviously the lease is where, you know, where we ended up on this or where Women's Empowerment ended up. So, again, I'd like to have that discussion because, again, we could make the choice and not even do it in this budget year. Obviously, it'd be incumbent, again, in subsequent budget years, and you have to account for that in the budgetary framework, but then you're not making a choice about what you're not going to fund this year, making some cut or some choice that, you know, puts another worthy program against this one. I just, I think this is an opportunity to capture, to help 80 families over the course of several years using American Rescue Plan dollars, at least as a backdrop for this. And, you know, again, we've got a lot of folks that are in distress in this community, and we get some off-agenda speakers here who are going to talk about another element in our community. It just, it seems to me that, you know, capture the moment here and don't let it get away. And so, again, I'd like to have, we can't make the budget decision this morning, but we could have it back to us quickly, and I think you've got funding to cover the first year if we gave direction and we wanted to see this for the full complement and for the period of time that was stated in some of the original discussions, so.
Yes, and please, I hope I was clear. I think this is a great program. I think it's a wonder. I was just trying to be clear about what the funding implications were. So, yes, we can bring this back.
Okay. And again, without making the Sophie's Choice.
Yes.
It still requires a budget decision by this Board at some juncture, and I'm sure Lisa could guide us on that, you know, relative to getting it back soon. But I would certainly be very inclined, Phil, and again, any other Board members that wanted to weigh in. I know Lisa and a couple of her Board members are here today if you wanted to hear anymore about the elements, and it's certainly timely, but would you like to hear from us?
Sure.
Okay, sure. Lisa, would you like to come forward and if you want to have your Board members accompanying here?
There we can. Good morning, and thank you all so much, Anne and the staff and all of the supervisors, and especially Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Natoli, who have worked very hard to help make this happen. Women's Empowerment, for those of you who aren't familiar, is a job readiness program, but it's much more than a job readiness program. Our mission is to educate and to empower women with the skills and the confidence that they need to get a job so that they can create a healthy lifestyle, get a job, and regain a home for themselves and for their children. And built into that mission really is the sustainability because once they have a job, they have the opportunity, if they have a safe place to stay, to climb that career ladder. And that is what we, what we are faced with right now is, you know, five years ago, women could get a minimum-wage job and be able to afford a one-bedroom apartment for themselves and their children. Now, they need to make $26 an hour and have a credit score of 650 to get into housing. So, they're getting jobs, they're working, and they're still either in their car with their children, in a tent with their children, or in a shelter for month after month after month after month because there's no place for them to go. And Women's Empowerment was founded 21 years ago to really deal with the generational cycle of homelessness, and you all are working so hard to address especially the long-term solutions to mitigating poverty and homelessness. What we can do is address the immediate ones, just like in any disaster, you need both, you need both the response for the immediate solutions and for the long term. And my concern is that these children can't wait the three to five to seven years it is going to take for those long-term solutions. They already have experienced so many adverse childhood experiences, and to go on three to five years more would have a lifelong effect on their mental health, on their physical health, and we're just kind of kicking that can down the road. We will have more women and children who are homeless. In terms of the two different options, we first applied for $3 million, and then we were asked to apply for $1 million, and then asked to apply for $1 million without the pilot project programs that we've been doing, which are about 10 housing units, both for families and then some at the Golden Lofts for singles. And those have been immensely successful. We lease from the landlord, and then we sublease to the women because we qualify. They don't. And after a certain number of months, they are able to take on the lease because they have fixed their credit, they've rebuilt their credit, they've increased their income, they've begun savings, and they're able to no longer be on that edge of homelessness constantly, homeless or on that edge. And that's what I want to see. So, with $1 million, we'll go forward, we'll do it, and it will serve 25 families. With $3 million, we can serve 80 families and their children. And that is a really, and that's just with the four years, so that we could spend the ARPA funds as well as our fundraising funds that are in there. And I see this as part of sustainability, both because sustainability is built into our mission and that we are all, we are all have our part in this jigsaw puzzle, whether it's a short-term solution or a long-term solution. And together, I really believe we can make that difference, hopefully for these 80 families. And I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Lisa. Just would like to also mention and remind folks that the county has enjoyed a partnership with Women's Empowerment for a number of years, especially as it relates to the property in North A Street. So, I feel very confident that with, you know, Lisa at the helm and her Board members and their leadership, that everything that she's just mentioned in terms of that everything that she's just mentioned in terms of repeatable successes can be achieved. So very energized and eager to see that this comes to fruition. And I'm glad that it's in the district I represent and want to continue to do everything we can to support the initiative.
Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you, Lisa. And I guess what I would like to, you know, certainly take the item this morning, but I'd like to see us get back to this before the end of the calendar year. We've just have a few meetings, if we could have that before us. Again, since I will be departing at the end of the year, and I'm very supportive of this, it doesn't hinge on me, but I would like to see us have this back for discussion. And again, assuming the board members are willing to entertain it. If there's reservations, certainly let's hear those this morning, so we don't get ourselves in a pickle. So is that doable? I know it puts a little pressure on your office. But again, for a conversation, I would like to have us to have an item for the board.
We will make every effort to get it here. It will definitely not be the first meeting in December. It will be December 13th or 14th.
Okay, all right. Well, we can call a special meeting for Christmas, chair discretion. Thank you.
I'll bring the aid now.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks.
Phil, thank you for bringing up our relationship with the Board of Supervisors and the facility. It is a fabulous facility that has allowed us to do so much and to do it so well. So thank you.
Great, thanks, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Did Scott or any board member want to speak? Or you're just, you're here in support, I see, before I leave the item? I know you made the trek down. I haven't seen you in the chambers for a while.
I know, really nice to see you guys. Thanks for bringing that up, Supervisor Natoli. My name is Scott Moak. I haven't filled out a speaker slip, but I will do so. My name is Scott Moak. I am, well, I do a lot of things in this town, but one of them is I get the chance to consult with a little bit on Women's Empowerment with my business partner, Erica Rao, who's watching and listening right now. Had no problem getting in, by the way. We have been gifted the chance to work with Women's Empowerment on this particular project, should it move forward and come to fruition. So cannot thank you enough for being willing to look at this initial investment. I know Ann has been an incredible champion and ambassador for this program and for Lisa in this, you know, in this situation that we're dealing with within our county of homelessness and what these women and children are facing. But I am thrilled, beyond thrilled, to be a part of this and to be a part of, being part of the solution that you guys are looking to advance. So thank you very much. Thanks for giving me the chance to work with Lisa indirectly. It's been incredible. So thanks for all your support. Good to see you all.
Great, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
So if there's nobody else, is there anybody on the phone, ma'am clerk, on this item?
We do not.
Okay, all right. Then we'll keep this on the consent calendar, and we'll have a companion item come back to us before the end of the calendar year. I'm going to pause here, because we are off-agenda. Folks are here, Father Madigan, and the folks are accompanying him. So we'll hold for a minute, we can go back to that, and we'll invite Father Dan to come forward and invite the other guests, and he can introduce them. And I know he wanted to make a presentation, so I said he would keep it within a 10-minute timeframe, so we'll... Good morning.
Well, good morning. I haven't had the privilege of being here for a long, long time, but I'm certainly very well acquainted with it. I've spent many, many a time here trying to convince the board to give me something that was impossible, but I was always treated very, very well.
We need a little more divine intervention, right, Father? Doesn't make it possible.
In the meantime, some years ago, I was invited in by Don and Phil, and they both gave me a special little recognition.
Good, thank you.
I want to thank you for that. And Rich, I have never met you, but I certainly worked with your family quite a bit, with Louis, and on and on and on in the old days. And Patrick, I haven't met you, but I know who you are very well. And so I haven't met you either, yeah.
And by the way, Father, I was baptized at St. Joseph's.
Okay, I told Don I'd be very, very brief, and I will. I want to introduce to you two people who are with me, Sister Maria Campos and Father Simon.
Hi, Father Simon, good morning.
I had a little chat with, on the phone with Don, and we were talking about the old days, and he brought up something that I'd really forgotten about, really, so long in the past, in the closing of Mater Air Force Base and the McKinney Act of homelessness and so forth. And then, at that time, we at the food bank, we were running about 10 homes for the homeless. And I thought it'd be time to throw my hat in the ring and ask for something, some property out of Mater Air Force Base. And I did, and of course, I should have asked for homes, but I didn't. It turned to stupid me. I asked for the commissary, and I got it. And Bishop was after coming to town, Bishop Wigan, invited him out to look at it. And I knew I was, you know, chewing off quite a bit there. But anyway, we qualified. And he came in, and of course, he talked me out of it. He said, "No, no, 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 you couldn't, no way," and all that. So I said, "Okay." Well, I think news got around, and Don picked it up, that we were pulling out. And he and Toby Johnson talked about it. And the day came when we met in the bishop's office, Don, right?
Right.
You and Toby, and so, oh, great, great day and all that. We were going to hand over and say, "Oh, we, you have it," and all that. Don, that day, there was promises made that the county would always be good to me.
Well, we're trying to make good on that, Father, so tell us what your ask is.
Okay, I'm here about, for, I'm here quickly to talk about Bishop Gago's maternity home. And it was established about 30 years ago by Bishop Quinn, whom we all remember well. And he was a great, great, kind, loving man. And it's an independent 501(c)(3), and I've been with it all those years, and to some extent, in some way. It operates out of two houses. We have two houses down on Lang Avenue down in South Sacramento. And then we finally convinced the diocese to get from them, which I thought was great, great. We got from them the convent out of St. Anne's in Meadowview, which is a beautiful, beautiful building. So that would put us up like, we would have something like around 18 rooms. We've graduated about 1,000 people, 1,000 moms and their babies. We've never got any kind of public monies. We make it on our own. We're constantly out there beating the bushes and looking for money. And I was used to that with the food bank. You keep going, you walk the razor's edge, you've been broke, but you still make it. So it works. All those years, there was a natural flow. The flow was great. We just got enough women coming in to do a great, great job. And we brought them into a home atmosphere. And we dealt with whatever problems they had. And after a while, they fitted in. In the beginning, they'd come very dubious. But after a while, they began to find out, gee, we're for real, like, we're, you know, we're for real. And this is a home, and we'll move you along the best we can. We will take you wherever you need. If you need, if AA is your problem, you're going to go there. If drugs is your problem, we're going to go there. We have a couple of vans, we'll take you to the doctors, we'll take you wherever you want. But the big thing, the big thing we were working on was mentoring. And that was our thing, that we have to be mentored. The belief that we all are who we are, not because we're, not because we made it all on our own, but people, we had a nice upbringing and great support, good family, good schools, good exposure and all that. And these poor people had very little, very little. And we tried to, and we had great, great success. We're very, very happy, and the whole thing worked very, very, very well. Now, I'm going to tell you something that I think, I want to be careful about the way I present this to you, because along came the virus. And that hit us all very, very hard. And you good people made a great decision to help the poor pregnant women. But what you did hurt us. You gave all these pregnant ladies vouchers to go to hotels. And there was a choice then for these ladies, I mean, to go off to a hotel with a comfortable voucher or to come to our place that demanded discipline. And the choice was, they opted for the voucher. And because of that, ever since, we've been floundering. And what I'm here today to say to you like that, we have a common, we have something great in common here in what we want to do, to take these poor pregnant women in and do the best we can and help them. It's a program that I think we should begin to say, "Hey, let's, let's work together. We need you." That's why I'm here. I'm an old fellow now, I'm 84. I don't know whether there's a little bit more mileage left in me, but I'd like to see, I'd like to see us combined together in doing something great. And that's why I'm here. I'd like to ask Sister Maria Campos if she would come up and say a few words. And Paulette has also joined us, I love.
Good morning, Sister Maria.
Good morning, and thank you for all the work that you all do. I know some of you from high school, and some of you, and the Desmond family I know as well. I go back many, many years. But I personally would like to say, I worked as president of the board for two and a half years, and I, my real work is working at the diocese with the bishop. So I kind of, I'm on the board now, because I have enough work to do with the bishop. And, but personally, in those two years, I witnessed the work that is being done with these women and how they are empowered to be able to leave that organization, to go out and get a job, and to make something of their lives. And so if, instead of, you know, giving them these vouchers for a hotel, somehow we could maybe collaborate with other groups or that can empower them to really educate them and give them a way that they can be even more successful with their lives. And we do have many women who have become very successful through their own initiative. Women who have been trafficked, sexually trafficked in Sacramento area, women who have been abused and beaten and been able to pick themselves up. But they need that support, and I think this home that we have is able to give them that. So thank you. In any way that you can be of help to us, that is what we are requesting.
If I understand correctly, then Sister Maria and Father Dan, that with the onset of the pandemic, and again, in efforts that were made to help people be safely housed, that you saw a drop-off, a significant drop-off in the folks that are either receiving referrals or coming to Bishop Gago's home for enrollment and then to obviously enroll in the program. And so if I understand, the request is that you'd like to work cooperatively with the county. And I know we've got folks in the audience, I know Shavon Kathar, Israela Ann Edwards, and others. It's, you know, it sounds like you have available space for folks, not unlike the discussion we just had about Women's Empowerment, but where, again, with the right offering and, I guess, given a choice versus just a voucher, then folks choose that versus knowing what the program holds and obviously has structure to it, as you said, some discipline. But could you just share what the numbers are, you know, kind of the drop-off? If I heard you correctly, you said you had 80 slots. I don't know if that includes the children, you know, pregnant women with their babies or what. So maybe somebody can just give us what the significant drop-off was.
This is Paulette. She's the director, and she can answer exactly the whole situation.
Okay, all right. Good morning, Paulette.
Good morning. Again, my name's Paulette Wiley. I'm the executive director of Bishop Gago's maternity home. I've been such for the past four years. I started in 2018, and we had a waiting list at that time. We had 12 beds available only.
Out of how many, Paulette? How many beds?
12 beds completely.
Do you have 12 beds only?
In our Lang Avenue home, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And so pre-COVID, prior to the transitional home being open, we had 12 beds available. Today, we have four residents, and we had a full home along with a waiting list, pre-COVID. And we did see those numbers significantly drop off once those vouchers were presented to the public. As Father Dan did state, it is, there is a difference at our home, because we do require them to seek treatment if they have a history of drug and alcohol. We do work with them if they'd like, with their case managers, if they have CPS cases. As Father said, we do require our residents to take parenting classes, domestic violence classes, whether or not they have any history of that, because most likely, they have history in their family, if it's not directly for themselves. And so we do also work with other partners in the community and other nonprofits. And of course, our women seek county services as well. So we get them to all of those services and try to work in a haphazard way historically to get them on housing, to get them with navigators and things of that nature. And typically, our problems in the past had been housing, because as everyone knows, it's difficult. But there's, once they've been housed for 90 days, they're no longer considered homeless in our program. But at the same time, we don't want to let someone back onto the street, back into a circumstance where they're struggling once again.
So you have vacancies now?
So we do have vacancies currently, yes.
How many then?
So we have six beds available in our Lang Avenue home.
And then what about in the facility, though?
In the transitional home. So once they've completed their time there, they have to apply for that, because there is, in that program, they're required to work or go to school or a combination thereof 35 hours a week.
Are you full? Are you full there?
It's 35 hours a week, working and school.
I'm sorry, but are you, so are you full in the transitional program?
No, transitional right now, because of COVID, we had moved people back to the other home, and they've all transitioned out. So now we're doing some home improvements on that side. But we're looking to reopen that home in the next January, so, in the next month or so. So we've, our numbers are quite significant. Pre-COVID, our home was full, and our transitional was full as well. So we had 18 beds full at that time. And we've served over 2,000 women and their babies in the last 30 years in Sacramento.
Okay, wow, yeah.
Paulette, before you go back, a question.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, ask my question.
So how are referrals handled? Or how do women, and I, from what I understand, it's both women that are pregnant expecting or, and/or women that have young children?
It is pregnant women only.
Pregnant women only.
We don't currently have the facilities for women with their own children. So typically, women who do have other children place their children with family members while they stay with us.
Okay.
And the first part of your question was?
Referrals.
Referrals. And so it really is word of mouth, whether it's through CPS workers. We've had judges that contact, that refer women to us. We've had police officers. But there's no real cohesive group. I've been trying to get, to be able to work with, say, for example, CPS, and get everyone together, because I've taken this program over in the last four years. My background is in education and in child development. And so trying to actually create a very cohesive program and what our objectives are to move these women along. And so to be able to present that, to show people what the services are that we've been providing and what our intention is when the women come with us, because it is intentional, what we're trying to achieve here with the women. And so, you know, being able to work cooperatively with the police, with CPS, with all these county departments and services, to be able to say, "This is who we are, this is what we do. These are the people that we can help and try to work together in order to get women and create a generational change." You know, this isn't just, you know, respite. We're looking to change generations. We're looking to change generations.
So, thank you for that. What about partnerships with local hospitals or health?
Yes, healthcare providers, yes. The social workers at the hospitals also contact us. So, but it's all through word of mouth. It hasn't really been, like I said, cohesive, being able to meet with cohesive groups. And so we're hoping that, you know, maybe meeting with you folks today, that could kind of generate that sort of cohesiveness.
How about Sacramento Steps Forward, any relationship with that organization?
We work with them, but again, it's all very part and parcel.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We have several supervisors in the queue here, so stand by. So Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Frost. So you're going to get plenty of engagement here.
Okay.
Patrick, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just, just so I'm clear, to follow up on the Chair's question regarding capacity. So there's 18 beds total between the two facilities, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, so six of those are at Lang?
12 are at Lang. We have two separate homes at Langs that share one, what I call campus.
Okay. And, and where's the, the remaining six beds?
It's in, on Meadowview, in Meadowview.
Okay. You know, just so we don't belabor a meeting here and since we're not off agenda and everything, but if you could reach out, because the area that you're talking about is in the district I represent.
Yes.
I'm sure that the people that you draw are from outside, but, but you are located in District Two.
Right.
So could you please reach out to my office and make contact? I'd like to visit and?
Most definitely.
And get to know the program better.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond, thanks, Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Paulette, thank you for being here. Father Dan, thank you for being here. Yes, you have a long history with my family, and it's an honor to see you here today. And yes, I want to just piggyback on some of the comments from Supervisor Curn and Supervisor Kennedy. I had a lot of questions as well about referrals, and I know I can't follow up on, on those today because this is off agenda, but I certainly will be following up with, with staff. And thank you for the work you do. I also would like you to reach out to my office as well with the same objective that Supervisor Kennedy just articulated. I have not had any interaction with you, or Lisa for that matter, with Women's Empowerment, but I would like to. And I, you know, there are so many organizations, so many efforts out there that are, that are, that are not talked about. They are a little bit fragmented, I think, as you alluded to, Paulette. And some of these are not, you know, the focus is on low barrier a lot of times, but there's also a place for other programs like yours that have specific requirements. I think they have much more likelihood of success for a lot of people. So I'm very interested in, in learning more and supporting, supporting what you do, supporting what Women's Empowerment is doing as well. So please encourage, encourage you, encourage you to reach out to my office as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Supervisor Frost, and then Ann Edwards.
Well, I just also wanted to ask if you would mind reaching out to my office. I'm wondering if it would be a good idea to connect you with all the homeless assistance resource teams. We have a lot of them in Sacramento County, and you would be, it seems like you'd be a great partner for our Safe Stay communities because you would be that next step. You know, we take them into the Safe Stay, the idea is that they'll be there and wrapped with services for 90 days, but at some point, transition to a more long-term shelter or long-term situation. And so I can see, I get calls, I get calls personally, and I know a lot of the heart people get calls and they call around, they're calling us. We're all calling each other, trying to figure out where to send people. And so it's really good for us to know that you're there, and I would also like to learn more about your program. So I hope you'll reach out to me, and thank you so much for what you're doing. I, I'm sorry that happened, but I'm glad you came down to talk about it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Ann.
So in addition to reaching out to all the board members, I'm going to connect you with Ms. Siobhan Cuthari, who is right here. She oversees all of our social service programs and including health, public health, homelessness, et cetera. And I think that will be a good connection.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Might want to also take advantage of the fact that Lisa Culp's in the audience too. So if you haven't gotten to know Women's Empowerment, it sounds like there's a lot of intersection.
We do, yes. We work with them.
Great.
As well. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Great. And thank you, Paulette. Father Dan, and thank you for achieving the goal here this morning.
Thank you very much. I said I'd be brief, the only thing, let's see. Father Simon, come on over for a second here. Father Simon is new to Sacramento, and he, I met his acquaintance the moment he landed, and he volunteered. He's the new man. He hasn't even got to a board meeting yet.
I've just discovered I'm the new man. Okay. All I'd like to say is, this has been very enlightening to me. I'm only two, two and a half months, not only in Sacramento, but in the country. As you can hear, I come from a distant land, which is somewhat chaotic at the moment. Somebody told me the other day that we're only four prime ministers away from Christmas. But I do, I do have experience of this kind of work. And the thing that strikes me, listening to the Women's Empowerment and also this, this team, is that, and the work that you're trying to do is that we're trying to break a cycle. There's a phrase which I think is attributed to Einstein, which I use a lot. No problem can be solved by the same consciousness that created it. And I think this home in particular, and what I've learned about it since I've been here, the work that it does, is teaching people who've been trained to think that there's only one way of thinking. And whilst the noble giving of vouchers obviously satisfies an immediate need, it also keeps people where they are. The phrase that Father Dan used sort of made me toes curl a little bit, discipline. We got a lot of that in the seminary, and that's why my toes curled. But we know, we know that children need that structure in their life. And unfortunately, those that don't get it get into those ways of thinking that need breaking. And I think the things that have been talked about here and all the reaching out that's going on is a real serious attempt to break the consciousness that's created these issues, not just for these women, but for society eventual, overall, and also for the children going forward, that they're going to be taught to think in a very different way, which is based not on cracking the whip, but actually stability and loving stability, you know, in their own communities, not in some foreign country. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Father Simon. Welcome to Sacramento, and we're glad you're here with us. So Father Dan, you want to?
Well, thank you. I'm sorry I didn't keep my side of the bargain by brevity, but anyway, that's okay. Thank you very, very much. We have great times. Phil, I had years and years and years, and you know well that, I remember you as a little fella running around.
Yeah.
With your dad.
You can stop there, Father.
Donna, I want to leave you a little envelope too. I have only, I have only one, one book with homelessness, but that's, I mean, that one book with Bishop Gaiago, but that's quite a few on homelessness.
Okay, great. Thanks, Father. If you just give it to the clerk, she'll give it to me here, or to Rebecca, my assistant.
Thank you, thank, thank you very, very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Father.
Good to see you, Father.
Yes, Father Dan, you take care. Okay, and then we'll be some follow on, and I, Ann, I appreciate you and Siobhan following up. And again, thank you to Father Simon, Sister Maria, Paulette, and Father Dan. Again, we're glad you were with us today, and thanks for the enlightenment and the good work, so. All right, very good. And there'll be a lot of follow ups, and you can give some tours for board members and hopefully, you know, build on the relationship to serve people of our community. All right, very good. So that was our off-agenda presentation. Do we have any other off agendas while we kept it open? Clerk?
No, hang on one second. Let me just jump up here. We do not have anyone in the queue, and we've opened both queues. And just to give an ETA, I'm told from DTEC that it's going to take about 30 more minutes to get that voicemail updated.
Okay. All right, very good. Well, thank you for following up on that. I know we have some other presentations. I did have one other consent calendar I didn't just go to very quickly, and then we'll go take our consent calendar and start in with our presentations. So thank you for your patience. Item 21, if you can call that.
Yes. Item 21, approve a salary resolution amendment and the conflict of interest code to add one FTE limited term position to the Department of Health Services Education Unit for the Dementia Friendly Communities Project.
Great. And very supportive of the item, but I don't know if Siobhan or Ann or somebody would want to just comment on this. I just felt it should be highlighted, it falls in the consent calendar, but this pilot program and when the statistics that are mentioned in the report relative to dementia and to memory issues that are affecting certainly, you know, a good segment of our population, particularly those that are, you know, well along in their lives. And I think the fact that we're going to be a pilot for a project that I think will really provide some good opportunity to, to help people long-term. And I don't know if you just want to take a brief moment to highlight Siobhan, you know, this is a salary resolution to actually, you know, fund the staffing, but I just, the program itself is, I think, very intriguing and inspiring. So if you'd just take just a quick moment.
Great, thank you. Siobhan Cuthari, Deputy County Executive for Social Services. And just, I wanted to just first highlight that across multiple departments, we are actually starting to expand efforts in terms of how, how do we better serve folks who are aging in our communities? I did invite Dr. Casiri, who is on the phone right now. This is one of her programs, so I'd like to give her the opportunity to talk about it.
Okay. Dr. Casiri, good morning.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. This is Dr. Olivia Casiri, Public Health Officer for Sacramento County. So the project that you have asked about, the dementia friendly project, the first time actually we presented it, we had talked about the blue zone. We are not using that term now because blue zone is copyrighted, but we wanted to just explain a little bit about how the project is going to work. So the money that we're getting, we are actually going to contract with, and hopefully this doesn't confuse you, an agency that is part of the blue zone project that will do an assessment. And as part of that assessment, we'll definitely work with stakeholders in the community such as, as has been mentioned, the AARP, as well as other departments within, within the county such as ECFAS. And part of that assessment will be to find out what the needs are in terms of how do we make it safer for individuals that are elderly, that have dementia, that have Alzheimer's. And then once we have results of that needs assessment, then we will put an action group together that will then develop a plan for how we are going to implement the, the suggestions and definitely, again, working with all of our partners in doing this. I know that some people have asked about what that would look like, some suggestions of where we think the direction will go is actually in helping businesses, making them more, giving, providing education about how to handle people that do have dementia and also how to make those businesses safer. But definitely that won't be the only thing. There'll be other parts of it as well as we go through the process. I did want to point out also, and this is in your board letter, that in Sacramento County, the recent data shows that Alzheimer's disease is the leading cause of age-related death. So this is a very important population for us to work with, and so very appreciative of the support and the interest in this pilot project moving forward, and definitely hope to come back with a report once we have a needs assessment.
Well, thank you, Dr. Casiri. And I think it'll be important as you go along to certainly update the board, maybe at some, some juncture to have a workshop of sorts. I know that we adopted a couple of years ago, an approach that we'd been age-friendly community and certainly looking at, you know, barriers, but certainly health challenges. And I think, you know, one of the things mentioned in the report was that, you know, because we have a longer life expectancy, you know, compared nationally, we're seeing, you know, that's one of the related impacts, but also I think, as Dr. Casiri said, just the deaths that are attributable to, you know, some of the dementia and, and memory issues and factors that fall into that category. So again, I just, again, I wanted to commend us for this, and I think, you know, working across departments, as you said, Siobhan, is really important, and hopefully this board again will be kept apprised, and the community as well, of not only what the pilot helps to sort out, but then bring recommendations for further implementation in the areas where we serve folks and hopefully have a healthier community as a result of that, so.
Yes, we will do that.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Casiri, and appreciate it, and certainly thank our staff for their work on this. Okay. That's on the consent calendar, so we do have the consent calendar. Do we have any callers on any items on consent calendar?
We do not.
Okay, very good. So with that noting what was put into the record, we would entertain a motion.
Move the consent calendar, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it's moving second to approve the consent calendar. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And I just want to confirm, was that Supervisor Kennedy that made the second? Mr. Desmond? Okay, thank you.
Very good. Ventriloquist. Okay, very good. All right. Now we have some, get into our presentations. I know we've got some guests and visitors in the audience, and so we're looking very much forward to making those presentations. So first item.
Item 38 is the presentation of resolution proclaiming November 2022 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month.
Okay, Supervisor Kennedy's going to do this. I don't believe the folks are able to receive it, but he's going to make the presentation, and I'm sure he'll get it to our folks as he can, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the recipient was not able to be here today, but this is an important enough issue that I wanted to take the time at the podium rather than just deliver it. However, I will be delivering a framed resolution, and I thank the board for your recent support of the resolution. I'm going to read some of these wherestes because I think they're very important. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer-related death among men and women in the United States according to more deaths, accounting to more deaths than colon cancer, breast cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas one in 15 men and one in 17 women in the United States will develop lung cancer during their lifetime. And whereas lung cancer incidence in decreasing, is decreasing twice as fast in men as in women. Each year, more women die from lung cancer than breast cancer, and by 2035, it's estimated that more women will die from lung cancer than men. And whereas annually, lung cancer in individuals who have never smoked is the seventh leading cause of cancer-related death and accounts for between 17,000 and 26,000 deaths per year in the United States. Whereas lung cancer screening guidelines help catch cancer early for individuals at high risk of lung cancer, leading to a higher likelihood of successful treatment. And whereas lung cancer screening can effectively reduce lung cancer mortality, but annually only between 2.8 and 7.2% of individuals in the United States eligible for lung cancer screening undergo lung cancer screening in low-dose computed tomography. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, State of the County of Sacramento, joins with communities and people from throughout California and the nation by proclaiming the month of November 2022 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Again, I want to thank the board for the support of this resolution. I will tell you on a personal note, you know, in 2010, if you had asked me, did I have any members of my family die of cancer, my answer would have been no. By 20, by 2011, my answer would have been, it wiped out an entire generation. My aunt, my uncle, my father, all died within 15 months of each other due to lung cancer. Two of them had not smoked for 30 years. And then, you know, to make the, it worse for my family, just a few years ago, we lost my cousin who had never smoked and was a very fit athlete and younger than I am today. So this does have a personal toll for me, but as the statistics show, it has a personal toll for pretty much everybody in this room. But yet, we don't talk about lung cancer because so much, so many of the time, much of the time, it's stigmatized, and people think, well, you know, they brought it on themselves, they're smokers. And that's not the case. Even if that were the case, it's still something that deserves our attention and something that we should be focusing on, but it's something that is prevalent and it's growing, and as the statistics that I said earlier state, a lot of it is avoidable through early detection. Now, in my own family, most of the detection was found at stage four, and that's very, very typical. And so that's why I wanted to come before you today to bring up the fact that this is something that we can get our arms around. It is something that's growing, and it's something that I really do, again, appreciate my colleagues for showing support for this important cause. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Supervisor Desmond.
Very briefly, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank my colleague Supervisor Kennedy for bringing this forward. It's amazing how many things that the five of us have a, some kind of connection to or relationship to in terms of things that we work on up here, and this is certainly no exception. I too, I lost my sister to lung cancer 10 years ago, and so appreciate you bringing attention to this and certainly appreciate the board recognizing November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Richie. I would. Thank you, Richie. I would like to also thank you, Patrick, for certainly bringing the resolution forward, but also for, you know, sharing certainly the personal impact that, you know, lung cancer had on lots of, you know, dear family members and certainly Richie as well. And I think it just highlights the importance of early detection of, you know, access to healthcare and the fact that it can touch any one of us, you know, in our lives. And so, again, thank you so much and we appreciate you calling attention to it this entire month, but I think year-round, so, yeah. All righty, we had no speakers on that item?
We did not.
Okay, very good. All right, if you'll call the next item, please.
Item 39 is a presentation of resolution recognizing outgoing members of the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council.
Okay, I'm going to ask the three gentlemen behind me to join me here at the, at the podium, and we have a presentation, but I'm going to take the opportunity to read into the record the resolution that was approved by our board this morning. This is honoring Gil LeBree, John Baranik, and Bill Shower, folks that I've known for a better part of my life, certainly my professional life. And we're recognizing today for their service with the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council. And the resolution talks about that today, we're recognizing Gil, John, and Bill for what's a combined 132 years of service on the Delta Citizen Municipal Advisory Council. So you can do the math, divide that by three. Pretty amazing, and I guess we could say they had life appointments, although I think each of them, as they'll share with you, are probably ready for retiring, to retire from the council service. So by way of background, the Delta Citizen Municipal Advisory Council was actually established before either I or my predecessor Toby Johnson came to the county. It was the first of what would then ensue to be planning advisory councils, but it was set up in a different structure, working with County Council at the time and then County Supervisor Henry Kloss, almost 45 years to this very date. November 16th, 1977, the Board of Supervisors actually approved the resolution, which formed the Delta Citizen Municipal Advisory Council. It tasked the, the group, and I think the uniqueness about the DECMAC is that unlike the planning advisory councils that followed on throughout the late 70s, early 80s that were established county-wide in the unincorporated area, it actually allowed for representation for folks who did not reside because obviously marina operators, business owners, and others who had interests in the, in the Delta, and it was framed that way. And also recognizing that the population obviously was small relative to other communities in, in, in the county, so it allowed for membership to actually be for folks that did not reside there. But these three gentlemen, as you're going to hear in just a moment, have resided there for either the entirety of their lives or nearly the entirety of their lives. But the DECMAC was formed to, as other advisory councils, to review and make recommendations to the Planning Commission, to the Board on projects, code amendments, and issues of importance certainly in the Delta and Delta communities. Following the formation of the council in November of 1977, Gil, John, and Bill were all nominated in early 1978 as three of the DECMAC's original members, as I said, by then Supervisor Henry Kloss. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about each of these three gentlemen. Gil LeBree, he's a native Californian. He was raised in the foothills near Newcastle, and he's a graduate of Cal Poly Sandusso Bispo with a degree in architectural engineering. And you might recognize Gil too, because he obviously has had projects over the years that he's assisted with because of his unique and I think really in-depth knowledge of the Delta, has represented folks over the years in his private sector work. Walnut Grove is home to Gil's wife Shirley, and as such, they settled in Delta in 1970, where he would come to join the DECMAC, as noted, and serve as his chairman. Got to be the longest-serving chairman probably in the history of advisory councils, but probably ever since 1983, until he retired, obviously, here in this month or this year. He's been very active in the community. He's served as Rotarian since 1976. He's been a scout leader in the troop that is based in Cortland, and also serves as an elder in this church, the Walnut Grove Community Church. John Baranik is a third-generation descendant of the Herzog family and comes from a background of dairy farmers in the Delta. John, and if I get any of this wrong, you can help correct it, we'll get it, make sure we get it, get it right, but. John attended California State University Fresno, where he earned a degree in viticulture and returned home to Sacramento County to farm in the Delta. John and his family established the Earhart Winery in 2002 as a tribute to the Earhart family, who sold 640 acres of land to John Herzog in 1902. Along with his wife Kathy, the Baranik family operated the winery until the Herzog family chose to retire in 2016. While serving on the DECMAC, John also has been active in a variety of matters in, in the, in the county and organizations. He's served with the Sacramento County Farm Bureau. He and Kathy both have been very active and certainly supported the Delta High Future Farmers of America and Delta 4H Projects and their students throughout the years. Bill Shower, the third of the trifecta here, he earned a degree from the University of California Berkeley, and for decades operated a family contracting construction business, WM Shower and Sons, Inc., based in Walnut Grove. And certainly, you can tour the landscape there and see a number of homes and businesses that Bill and his son and family have either constructed and/or renovated over the years. Bill's a Walnut Grove native and lives in a home designed and constructed by he and his wife Carol. And in addition to serving on the DECMAC, Bill has also been active in the Walnut Grove Rotary Club and served as his president in 1986. I want to note that during the many years that these three gentlemen have served on the DECMAC, they represent the community well, and they've worked with county planning staff and other county representatives on a number of important projects, which include the original Delta Community Plan, Delta Waterway Zone, special planning areas in the Lower Andrus Island area, the Walnut Grove area, the Lock Special Planning Area, and the Cortland Special Planning Area, and many, many others over the years. In the 1980s, the DECMAC and its members were integral in drafting Sacramento County's Delta Community Plan, which is unique to that community because it has special elements that recognize the different land use characteristics, including the agricultural, recreational, and rural town settings, which make up the distinct communities in the Delta. These three gentlemen, with a combined 132 years of service, have helped shape the planning and projects and the communities in a complimentary fashion that really, I think, reflect well on the Sacramento-Samhain Delta and our communities in the Delta. And they will benefit future generations long after their years of service. So it's my deep privilege and pleasure, certainly I call, consider all of them friends, that today on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we're able to extend our heartfelt thanks and appreciation and best wishes to Gil LeBree, to John Baranik, and Bill Shower, and their families. Obviously, they've spent many hours away from home on businesses related to the DECMAC. But for their many decades of dedicated service as members of the Delta Citizen Municipal Advisory Council, and further, we want to applaud and commend the numerous and lasting contributions which each of you have made to the Delta and to our South County communities in helping to preserve and protect and enhance the quality of life for all those who live, work, and visit in the Sacramento-Samhain Delta and the communities that constitute those in Sacramento County. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I want to invite each of you to come forward. You're welcome to say a few words and present a resolution to each of you, and then we'll get a picture down here with all the members of the board if we could, so, come on. Hey, John. There you go, my friend. Y'all, good to see you, my friend. Y'all. All right. You got the three musketeers right here, so. So I'll invite you, if you'd like to say a few words, and then we'll get a photo with the board members.
There was all different people up there. You know, it's been a pleasure to be involved in the Delta, live in the Delta, work in the Delta, and to really carry out the vision that the board had in terms of the Delta. It is the open space. There has been little, very little growth. There have been no, there've only been two, two small subdivisions in Walnut Grove since I've been on the council. So it's, it's been preserved, and it's still being preserved thanks to all of those efforts that were made to create those special planning areas. We started with 15 members, went down to 11, and then we went back up again when some additional area was added. So there've been a lot of, there's been a lot of things, there've been a lot of things the council's been involved in over all of these years, and there's been a lot of people who've been part of it over all of these years. Of the 15 that started, seven have passed away. There are still some alive. What you're looking at here is 77, 86, and 80 in terms of years, and we've spent 45 of those working for you down in the Delta. Definitely enjoyed our relationships with, with this Supervisor Natoli, with Toby Johnson, a little bit with Henry Kloss. They've been very supportive and great supporters of the Delta. And so lots of thanks goes to this gentleman that we've had, it's a great time working with, and of course, we wish him a good future too. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Gil said it all. I just want to thank you. Appreciate it.
It's been a pleasure serving the county. You start getting my age, you start forgetting things. Hearing becomes a problem along with everything else, but it's been fun. It's been a long road. We're at the end of it. Thank you very much.
Good photograph, a little. Thank you.
Thank you.
All the other ones, they have election.
I'm going to say my successor's going to have a difficult time filling some open seats down there, and certainly, hopefully you'll be able to assist and get some of the junior members of the community to step up and give another 40 years going, going forward, so. Okay. Thanks, gentlemen. Good job. Good job. Okay, very good. Thank you, gentlemen, and next item, we have another presentation.
Item 40 is to approve a resolution accepting a $290,000 donation from Epi's Wellness Foundation in support of future programs for therapeutic recreation services and the Gibson Ranch Sensory Playground Pathway to Play, and approve an appropriation adjustment request in the total appropriation amount of $290,000, and a presentation and adoption of a resolution honoring Epi Johnson and family for their support of Sacramento County regional parks and therapeutic services.
Okay, thank you. Liz, you want to make a presentation before we actually officially approve the item? There's no doubt it's going to be approved, and then we're going to give a chance to recognize the Johnson family and others. Liz?
Yes, I'd like to make a short presentation, invite a couple people over, and I also believe we have a video, little video clip to entertain us as well.
Okay.
We are here this morning, still this morning, yes, this morning, out of love, respect, and gratitude for the Epi Johnson family and for all that they have given to our department and our Sacramento County Therapeutic Recreation Services. I am respectfully requesting the acceptance of this donation, which will further the support of our therapeutic recreation services and also our Gibson Ranch Pathway to Play Sensory Play Area, which we are very excited to break ground on, hopefully in the near future. We're in the final planning stages for that playground, which will serve children on the autism spectrum disorder. Very excited about that project. If you grew up in Sacramento, you heard of a little event called Epi's Great Race. All kidding aside, Epi's Great Race was an iconic event for Sacramento County, and the proceeds from that event over the years contributed greatly to many programs in Sacramento County. And Epi Johnson was, or could be, larger than life. And so I'd like to have our D-Tech folks bring up the clips, montage clips that we have for you, just to remind you how much fun he had bringing forward donations to the Board of Supervisors. If we could play the clip, please.
Things to do. You're straight, I don't know. So I have to make this presentation to the chair. I will come down. The problem is, a week before the race, I was putting my kayak on my van, I slipped, I lost my balance, I cut my finger on the bungee cord, I broke my wrist, and I sprained my ankle. So the great team time, we go Wednesday. So we had, we got a fill-in, and the time was about, a lot less than two minutes, but the second-best time ever. So unfortunately, the timing is very poor, but those things happen, so let's not even talk about it. The thing is...
I think it's drawing up a little bit.
And then we got a sheriff all the way in the back there. They have all these celebrities on the team. They're going to work real hard, and we're going to make the, and we want to... Let's do it on the team, too. What do we do with the money? Last year, we had to garbage the bags and all that stuff. I said, well, how far can we make this money stretch? So we called the Treasury Department and said, well, let's see now. How far, so let's see, who's going to grab that in? Well, just go down, let's see how far it stretches the chamber over. Oh, slow, not, don't pull too hard. There we go. Keep going. Keep going. Easy now, take it easy, let's go.
You might hold it up in the middle, so it doesn't... Hold it in the middle, so it don't get sagged in, okay.
We're going to turn around, so the hundred-dollar bills, keep going. How far is it going to go? You're going to go that way? Hey, we got there. Keep going, Roger. Keep going. We counted, we measured, there's 65 feet, 65 feet, one end of the chamber to the other. Every hundred-dollar bill is, is six inches. We have 131 dollar bills, we have $13,000 in cash sitting over here, and it took Perry forever to glue them together, I want you to know. So we called the Treasury Department, you know, to see what we could use, and then we got something else to present, don't we? Yeah, because this isn't the end of it, we got something we want to give to you guys. But we, another statement I want to make. There we go, I got a piece over here. One more piece there. There we go over here. You're going to have to figure this one out. There we are. Epi's Great Race Foundation has instructed me, before we make a donation, that we must test the Sacramento Board of Supervisors, County Board of Supervisors. We must give them the Epi's Great Race IQ Test. Now, IQ means intelligent quotient, okay? And so, we're going to ask these questions. You must pick one person to answer each question, you see? And then we'll see, if you pass the test, you get the check. Forget that. The three over there. There we go. Is that it? 22,350, that's it. That's it. Then...
You might hold it up in the middle, so it doesn't...
Hold it in the middle, so it don't get sagged in, okay.
We're gonna turn around, so the hundred-dollar bills, keep going. How far does it go? You gotta go that way. Hey, we got there. Keep going, Roger. Keep going. We counted, we measured, there's 65 feet, 65 feet, one in the chamber, the other. Every hundred-dollar bill is six inches. We have 131 dollar bills, we have $13,000 in cash sitting over here, and it took very forever to glue them together, I want you to know. So we called the Treasury Department, you know, to see what we could use, and then we got something else to present, don't we? Yeah, 'cause this isn't the end of it, we got something we wanna give to you guys. But another statement I wanna make. There we go, I got a piece over here, one more piece there. There we go over here. You're gonna have to figure this one out. There we are. Epi's Great Race Foundation has instructed me, before we make a donation, that we must test the Sacramento Board of Supervisors, County Board of Supervisors, we must give them the Epi's Great Race IQ Test. Now IQ means intelligent quotient, okay? And so, we're gonna ask these questions, you must pick one person to answer each question, you see? And then we'll see, if you pass the test, you get the check. That is, is that it? Then we're gonna have a thing called like Deal or No Deal, and we have the models with the suitcases from California Family Fitness. Ladies, come on in. Bring the models in. Santa Claus, I've been Professor Epi, but I wouldn't do that. Okay, this is how this is gonna work, okay? We've made a few changes to it. It's not gonna be Deal or No Deal. You can go to the next suitcase, or you can go over there, if you open these guys up. So you gotta decide right now. If you say No Deal, we go on to the next suitcase. If you say Deal, we write the check right now. You wanna sign the check?
Well, how many is it?
No Deal. No Deal. Please, only one left, is number two. Open number two, please. $48,170. That's a lot of money, you know that, huh? $48,170. Now, you know, we have the other mystery suitcase there now.
You're out of order there, Epi.
What can I do? I don't have the guy with the check, we don't have the pen. What can I do about that? But seriously, we've, we kinda planned this thing over the years, you know, we've done...
That's so nice. Oh, my God, I thought it was way illegal.
You forgot to tell the $40,000, by the way. You can't turn over the puzzle. Now, what you're gonna have to do is bring the puzzle over here, put the pieces together, and you can't flip both, start the, start the sign, right now, you got two minutes to do it in. We go in there, and just put them right here. Don't turn them over now, otherwise, bang, you gotta lay them on this table over here, and we got the tapers, we'll tape them together, and make sure they're done, and don't flip them over. We have invisible ink there, invisible ink, that means everything becomes invisible, you flip those things over. There we go. Well, I tell ya, here we go. Just got a couple photographs over there, let's get Rich over here.
I'm thankful that we could bring that trip down memory lane for all of you. It was fantastic watching that every year. I'd like to introduce Ron Suter, who is the former director of Regional Parks and a board member of Epi's Wellness Foundation, to make a few remarks. And then I believe we have a special resolution. I don't know if the board needs to take action first, or if you want to present it after how you'd like to do that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Liz, we'll certainly, we can take action. It's already signed, so I can tell you, it's already to go, so.
Awesome. And then finally, we do have Lisa Mangels here in the audience, who would like to make the final comments.
No, we're glad to have Lisa with us, and thank you and Ron, I know you've, you know, put a lot of work in behind the scenes, and you're gonna make some comments, but Epi really graced these chambers on many occasions over the years.
Many occasions, and I'll make my comments very brief.
Take your time.
But I can't go without saying, after seeing some of those videos, I think Supervisor Serna, watching you go around the arena, we didn't see that, on her tricycle, was one of the better ones. Do you remember that one?
I think that was Supervisor Gee, and he was forced to wear clown shoes.
I don't remember the clown shoes, but I do remember you. That was one of my favorites. The other favorite they showed was the hundred-dollar bills.
Oh, yeah.
He gave a hundred-dollar bills to the board, and you should have seen Roger sitting up there stuffing him in his pocket. And Supervisor Nila, we go, you can't do that. But before that, I must've spent probably six hours with the accounting department saying, you can't do that. You can't give money out like that. You can't let the board have that kind of money. And we're going, the board deals with millions of dollars every day. Why can't they deal with $30,000 in a hundred-dollar bill? Well, you just can't do that. So we sat outside and counted every hundred-dollar bill that we returned from the board, and we had $30,000. And the other favorite was quarters.
Oh, yeah.
He wheeled quarters into this chambers in wheelbarrows.
Yep.
And you think that caused troubles with the financial department? They went crazy. Who's gonna roll those? Well, you are. We can't do that. You're gonna have to, 'cause you won't let me take the money out of the chambers, because now it's your money. So those are my favorite, favorite three. But I do want to say, the foundation has been around since 2004. I went to Epi in 2003, and I said, Epi, we need a place for this money, 'cause we were generating more and more money as the race moved on. And I said, let's create a foundation that would help therapeutic recreation services and other services for people with disabilities in Sacramento County. So Epi created the foundation in 2004, for the specific purpose for putting on money for the foundation, for the race, all the money went back into the race, and for persons with disabilities, and that's one of the reasons we're here today. So it's been around since 2004. The original board, I was on the original board, was made up of all participants from the Great Race. And since then, Frank Ciro and some of the other members that were on that board have since passed away, and Epi, of course. So with that, I, it's been my pleasure to be on that board since it was created in 2004. So with that, I will turn it over to Liz.
Yep. I'm gonna come down, I guess we'll invite Lisa and Ron, you're welcome.
Well, we're not ready, we're not done yet. Lisa wants to say some things.
Good morning.
Good morning, Lisa, thank you for being with us, making the trip here.
Thank you. I'm honored to stand before you today, just as my father, Epi Johnson, and my brother, George Johnson, have before me. My father was known as a successful restaurant owner and businessman. He was also known as a showman and a philanthropist, as we saw with the videos. Those last two characteristics were best evidenced when he made donations before this group. Whether he wore his Professor Epi costume or delivered it in a wheelbarrow full of cash, Dad always said his greatest legacy would be Epi's Great Race. My brother, on the other hand, was calmer and more businesslike in his approach. He would stand before you, make his presentation, and be done. I've always preferred to be behind the scenes with the Great Race and the foundation, but I'm here today because my father and my brother are no longer with us. Since 1974, sorry.
It's okay. I know, in condolences, I know that George only passed away a few weeks ago, Lisa, so...
Thank you. Since 1974, when Epi's Great Race started, we've donated roughly $1.5 million to various charities in Sacramento, but the main benefactor has been the county's therapeutic recreational services program. These decisions have been guided by the Epi's Wellness Foundation Board, and I'd like to thank our longstanding and devoted board members. We have Ron Suter, Jim Geary, Dan Colan, and Will Kempton. Today's the final page in a story that began with the first Epi's Great Race in 1974. The foundation is pleased to present you with a check in the amount for $290,000. This will provide $140,000 to TRS, and $150,000 to support the new Gibson Ranch Pathway to Play project. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
End of an era.
Yes. Lisa, again, want to express our gratitude and thanks certainly to you and to your family, and your father and your brother. I know, again, all of you have graced these chambers with your presence and with, I think, the fun, but also the real impact that the Wellness Foundation and certainly the Great Race brought to this community in so many ways, obviously highlighted it was internationally renowned, and it was certainly a good example of a triathlon. I think it was the largest one anywhere in the world, I think, at one time. But when I think about Epi, and certainly Lisa and George and your board, and again, Ron Suter and, you know, his predecessors and successors all have been a part of, you know, something very good because of the conduct of the race on the parkway. But I think about therapeutic recreation services. I haven't been on the board the years that I have, there were some pretty tough times budgetarily, and that program kinda came up short at times. And Epi, not only with his contribution, he made sure that he had money, but it also gave him a platform to come before this board during times of budget distress, and to say, you know, you, the county, you know, we're stepping up here on private sector, you know, with race dollars, but you need to support the program, because it helps those folks who, and whether they be part of Special Olympics or other programs, and I think it was the Chargers, that was the, the Chargers. And we would have them and their family members here talking about how much it meant to them, not only for the participation in the outdoors, but also the camaraderie and the teamwork that came with them being a part of something very good. And again, I know our county staff and certainly other members of the community supported that program, but Epi was the biggest fan and supporter in so many ways, and I know he prompted the board in years past to, you know, step up, and if you're gonna cut budgets, don't cut it there, because those folks are so dependent upon that program, and but he put his money where his mouth was. And he was here, and again, we had a lot of frivolity, and certainly celebrated in different ways, but when you think about, you know, a million and a half or more dollars that went back into this community, let alone what it generated with the race, but the goodwill. And again, your father and you and your brother were ambassadors of goodwill, and I know you cared very deeply, and I think the contribution you make today will be a lasting legacy beyond what you've already given in so many ways, to have a playground that'll be accessible to folks who, you know, may otherwise be challenged or be excluded, is gonna be inclusive. And then I think the contribution to TRS will again, will be an ongoing boost to that program. And I can tell you, after several years of some rough budgets, it's now embedded in the budget, and I think the last time, it may have even preceded, I think Phil's service on the board, we made it very clear, you can bring, you know, your budget recommendations, but if you bring that one back, it's gonna get put right back to staff, because it's not, you know, no way where we're gonna cut TRS. And again, Epi was a big part of that. So we have a resolution, and we'll take action here in a moment, but certainly, we received the funds with a lot of gratitude in our hearts and our minds for what you and your family contributed. This resolution goes through and talks about some of the notable events throughout the, you know, the 50 years of the race, but what it does say, and now therefore, and I want to read this into the record, is that this Board of Supervisors, on behalf of all the people in this county, past and present, we want to honor Epi Johnson, his memory, we honor your family, Lisa, your brother, and your mother, and we want to express our deep appreciation and thanks and gratitude for your generosity and your multiple positive contributions to the quality of life for people from all walks of life, of all ages in the Sacramento community, and we wish you many blessings in all the years to come, because you've been a blessing to this community. Thank you so very much. I invite the board members down.
Don made a very positive point, that I don't think the race could have taken place without Lisa's mother, Nancy. She was behind the scenes pushing Epi, making sure it went and worked. There is a picnic area in Riverbend Park named after Nancy and Epi Johnson. So I just wanted to push that forward, because we've talked about Epi, we failed to talk about Nancy, and she was a critical part of the race.
We applaud her, too.
Thanks, Ron.
Yeah, right, yeah. Make sure you tell the board that, okay? That I helped you learn how to be a council member when you first, she was our, she was, when she first came to the county, she was Council of Parks, so we taught her everything she knew at Parks.
Well, once again, we thank the Epi's Foundation and the Johnson family, and all those have been a part of the race. Again, it brought many thousands of visitors to this community, and again, as I said, the goodwill and the investment in lives of people in this community is beyond compare. So again, thank you so very much, Lisa. Now, we need to take action on that item, so if we could have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved in second or twice, and so we can maybe do unanimous consent? No, we'll do a vote. Please, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good, all right. Thank you so much. All right.
Okay, item 41 is County Service Area Number One, Zone Number One, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for Parcels 242-0423050 and 242-0231100.
Okay, Cheyenne, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Natoli, and members of the board. I am Cheyenne Raymond, Senior Civil Engineer with the County Engineering Division. The development project is located on the south side of Magnolia Avenue, approximately 400 feet west of New York Avenue, and proposes to create four single-family residential parcels, one remainder, single-family parcel, and a private driveway to service the project. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding for street and safety light maintenance. County Service Area Number One provides these services throughout the unincorporated county. To satisfy this condition, the project proponent submitted an application to initiate the benefit category change process for County Service Area Number One, and on September 29th, a ballot and notice were mailed to the property owner informing them of today's public hearing. The project site currently consists of two parcels that are in the streetlight-only benefit category with an annual assessment of $5.12. Because the project has a private driveway, the proposed change is into the enhanced street and safety light benefit category at the non-residential rate, which is based on the frontage length of the private driveway on Magnolia Avenue. The private driveway is approximately 45 feet long, and based on current rates, the current, based on current rates, the total annual assessment will be $41.65, which will be divided equally amongst the five residential parcels at $8.33 per property. If your board has no questions, staff recommends you open the public hearing to consider all written oral testimony, close the public hearing, and direct the clerk of the board to tabulate the ballots, and if there is no majority protest, adopt the resolution in front of you.
Okay. Thanks, Cheyenne. Let me go to board members, any questions? I don't see anyone in the queue, so with that, I will open the public hearing, and do we have any, have anybody signed up to speak on this?
We do not.
No one at the phone?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, last call, if anyone wants to speak to item 41. Seeing none, then I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll turn it back to the clerk to tabulate the ballots.
I have received one ballot. From Cheryl Gasky, for parcel numbers 242-0423050, 242-0231100, on 7764, Magnolia Avenue, Fair Oaks, California, and they are in favor of the proposed change.
Okay, so noted, then. Ballots have been tabulated, I'll turn it back to Ms. Raymond for reading those important points into the resolution, so the board can take action.
Thank you. Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests. Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges, to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition.
All right, very good. So it's written into the record, and this is in Supervisor Desmond's district, did you have anything else? If not, a motion would be in order. Rich?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. If there's no public comment, I would move to adopt the resolution to approve the benefit category change.
Okay, very good. All right, we have a motion?
Second.
Moved in second, then, to approve the recommendations outlined, noting what was written in the record relative to the tabulation of the ballots, and nothing further. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you all. Thanks, Cheyenne. Okay, next item, please.
Item 42 is the 2023 Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency Proposed Budget.
Great. Good morning. And I think Susanna is our presenter, so good morning to you.
Good morning.
If we could get the presentation up.
Good morning, Chair Natoli and board members. My name is Susanna Jackson, and I am the Chief Financial Officer at SHRA, and I am here to present to you the 2023 budget for the agency. So first, I'm going to be sharing big picture highlights of what's happening at the federal and state levels in terms of affordable housing and impact, and how it impacts us here in Sacramento. Then we'll dive into specific revenue and expenditure estimates for 2023, and we will wrap up the presentation with a short video. We are presenting a balanced budget for the period of January through December 2023 and incorporates the activities of the housing authorities of both the city and the county of Sacramento, which includes various federal entitlement funds, local housing funds that are administered by the agency for the city and the county of Sacramento. So first, looking at the updates at the federal level, excuse me, are specific to the president's initiative on what he'd like to accomplish over the next five years. This includes expanding the tax credits, HUD grants to support housing forward, and leveraging the American Rescue Plan funds for investments in affordable housing. Moving on to updates at the state level, there was $2.7 billion in the budget to address homelessness and housing affordability, which includes homeless housing assistance and prevention, $500 million for low-income housing tax credit program, infill infrastructure grants program, and California Housing Finance Agency's mixed income program. Additionally, there's approximately $1 billion for shovel-ready projects through California Accelerator Program. Transitioning now to the agency budget and taking into account what is occurring at the, at each level, both state and federal, we can apply it to how it affects our agency budget. The total estimated resources available for 2023 is $431.1 million, and it's mostly received at the federal level, specifically approximately 69% of our funding is from federal sources. Many of these federal grants received are multi-year grants, so it's important that we budget accordingly so that these grants can last anywhere between two and five years. Two examples of our federal programs include the Housing Choice Voucher Program, which is our largest program, which is followed by the Public Housing Program. I will highlight these two programs individually later within the presentation. Looking at the state and local funding, remaining about $133.7 million, it comes from state and local sources such as the Housing Trust Fund and the Affordable, the Affordable Housing Fund. Once again, you can see how the majority of agency funding is from the federal level, so it's really important that we stay in touch with what is happening at all branches of government. This slide shows specifically how we are planning on using the funds in 2023. So as mentioned, our total budget is $340.1 million, and it's broken up as follows. So we have the housing assistant payments, which are estimated at a total of $154.6 million. That includes our regular half as well as other shelter plus care programs. Capital projects are estimated at around $89 million, salaries and benefits at 42, services and supplies at 26 million, public services 9.7, and debt service at 2.2. So this slide provides a four-year comparison. So as mentioned, our total budget is $340 million in total, and the estimated expenditures will decrease at approximately $7 million from prior years. So you can see each category, the variance from the prior year's budget, and the greatest difference you can see is the expectation of the winding down of the emergency rental assistance program, and that is where a lot of the change in budget, budgetary planning comes from.
Susanna, can I see a question on that chart? On the salaries and benefits, over a three-year period, or actually four budget years, but the salaries and benefits went from $28.7 million to 42 million. Was that, was there additional hiring up because of some of those programs? And will that then, obviously, there, you know, there are compensation changes because of negotiated contracts and so forth. But I guess I'm curious, because that's a 50% jump.
Correct. So we've taken on a lot of projects, whether it was the emergency rental program, we do also manage shelters, several shelters as well, and you'll see the impact of that going forward from back to, from 2020.
Okay, so that will be reduced? Is that what you're saying? Or?
That's showing why the increase is because of the additional programs we now manage over that period of time.
Okay, so that's going, so actually, that will, will hold beyond the 2023 year because you've actually have staffed up and you will retain that staffing because of shelters and?
Correct. That's the plan.
Just if I could interject.
Sure.
For the shelters, we'll continue to retain those staff, which are funded by the city for the individuals who oversee all of the operations. For the emergency rental assistance program, you will see a tapering off, and that's where a big jump occurred. So as we continue to expend those funds, which we still have funds on the county side, and we will continue to ask for more funds from the treasury, but at some point, there will come into that program.
Okay. Very good. That answered my question, and that's what I was thinking, but it wasn't clear just from the single line chart here, so. Okay, thanks.
So as mentioned previously, I just would like to briefly highlight our two largest programs and how they're funded. So this slide represents the main housing assistant payment funding that we receive from, excuse me, that we receive from HUD. So this is approximately 115 in 2020, and it increases yearly to an estimate of 142.8 million in 2023. The increase is estimated based on the rising costs that it takes for a family to actually lease up a property, as long, also, along with the proposed funding available at the federal level. So nationwide, the program is currently estimated to receive an additional $2 billion in funding specifically for the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and that is both from the proposals from the House and the Senate. So it's important to note that these funds are restricted specifically for the housing assistant payments. This slide illustrates the historical revenue trends of your public housing programs. So as you can see, 2021 was a good year with approximately $21.6 million received combined for both the city and the county housing authorities due to an almost $2 million increase in the funding due to the CARES Act. As we move beyond 2023, we anticipate smaller revenues for a few reasons. First, the CARES Act money is gone. It's not anything we continue to receive. But also, the overall units that are going to be reduced in the public housing program. So through the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, which I know that we are talking about constantly, we are disposing of the public housing units to, in order to modify and modernize, and it'll cause this revenue to go down in the future. At the federal level, public housing overall has anticipated a modest increase in the program for both proposals in the House and the Senate. So at this time, if there are no further questions, we'd like to direct your attention to a short video that's detailing the agency's focus when budgeting, and we can address any questions.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and see the video, and then we'll go to questions.[1103.42]
Well, thank you for that summation. It was well done. Good chance to highlight some of the good work over the year. So let me ask-
Natoli?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Michelle.
While I appreciate that video, that was the city video, not the county video. I know you were like, well, there's our county stuff. That's why I'm like, oh, my gosh.
I was good with it. It was mostly District 1.
So, yeah, that was all for you.
We have County 1 loaded up.
So I think they only have the city videos here. So what I will do is ensure that I send the county video to you each personally, so that you can see all the wonderful things that's going on, especially like our project out in Citrus Heights, all kinds of other great things. But I apologize.
It's okay. All right. We can give us part two. I mean, you know-
That's true.
Come back and present it, so. All right, let me go to board members. Any questions, Susanna, the budget, number of representatives here? I just wanted to ask a question. It was in one of the slides, but I was gonna ask it anyway. The Veterans Assistance and Supportive Housing, the VASH, I mean, you had a number there where you assisted the veterans, but I know there's a project in the works. This board's certainly familiar with at least the generalities of it. Let me see, Ranch Cordova on the expansion of Veterans Village, and that would require, that was key in the previous development, again, thanks, LaShelle, and others who worked on that at the time. Are we working closely? Because again, that was a real tight turnaround the last time. I don't need to tell you or Christine, because I know you were on the front line of all that. But so I'm curious, are we gonna give ourselves enough lead time to make sure that, you know, as that project moves forward, that's key to that permanent supportive housing at Veterans Village?
Absolutely. We will be issuing, or have we already issued? We've already issued the RFP? Soon, we'll be issuing the RFP for the VASH vouchers, so that they can be project-based, and I'm pretty sure that they will be applying. The good thing is that because we did go through all those gyrations before, it's a little bit easier now in dealing with the VA, and we do have enough capacity in terms of VASH vouchers to go ahead and issue that RFP for vouchers.
That's great. Well, this brings dollars into our community, certainly, you know, and it helps with obviously the rental offsets, you know, permanent supportive, you know, housing environment. So glad to see that. Do you have any other projects? I guess I was just curious, any other projects that would apply the VASH, you know, they can use their portable, I guess, in a lot of cases, but is there any other project-based ones that people are looking at?
There are some additional ones coming up in the future, yes.
Okay. Does Marisol Village have any VASH associated with it?
There's a few VASH vouchers there, yes.
Portable ones, not dedicated ones?
No, there are a few dedicated ones.
Are they dedicated?
They're fully dedicated.
Project-based, okay. And I just wanted also, again, this will be the last opportunity I have to, you know, to weigh in certainly on your budget, but to thank SHRA staff for your work over the years. I know I'll probably get a chance to do that between now and the close of the calendar year, but certainly, you know, embodied in the budget, even we saw the city portion of it, I know there's a lot of good things in there for the county and certainly have been over the years, even a strong partner with the county and with other agencies and providing a whole host of certainly very needed projects, you know, many of them focused on housing, but we certainly over the years, when we had redevelopment, you know, worked with businesses and investment in economic aspects of communities and job creation, and certainly with the block grant program and what is funded, you know, it's relatively small compared to the overall budget, but tremendous impact in the communities where those investments have gone. And again, you know, we had an opportunity to see that a couple of weeks ago on a separate item, but I would just say that it's, you know, LaShelle, and certainly for those that are here that I've worked with, others that maybe I haven't worked directly with, I want to, you know, thank you and your staff for your efforts over the years. It's been a real pleasure, having had the opportunity to work with you and to partner on projects, particularly in communities that are underserved, certainly disadvantaged economically and/or having other stressors. SHRA has, you know, been a godsend, certainly through the programs you've administered in those communities. It's made a tremendous difference generationally. We've talked earlier this morning about some of the generational changes that can occur with certain services and, you know, program impacts, and SHRA certainly has done that. It's given people a footing. A lot of times where they were, you know, either had slipped or were slipping, and it's also boosted efforts to bring quality of life improvements to a vast number of communities throughout the county, both unincorporated and incorporated, as well as in the cities where we have agreement cities, and to continue to, you know, build community in so many different ways. And I think it summed it up when you said changing lives. You've done that for decades now, and I just want to extend my compliments to all of you currently, but certainly those I've had a chance to work with in the past as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Frost, you were punched up too?
Thank you, Chair. I did want to say, I thought you were being tremendously, you know, not blowing your own horn by missing out on a number of projects there. So I look forward to getting the county projects.
Yes.
But I do want to thank, you know, and take this opportunity, not so much to comment on the budget, to comment on the agency. You know, you've been a game changer this last few years in South Sacramento, and we're not yet seeing it necessarily, because as we know, these things take time, but in the next two years, the impact that you're going to make on families and lives in South Sacramento and people who are unhoused and those who are on the verge, on the verge of becoming unhoused, the work that SHRA has done in the last few years has made a tremendous difference. So I want to say thank you to take this opportunity to say thank you to your whole staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Sue?
I was just gonna say thank you for all that you're doing, LaShelle. That video was amazing, and I also wonder if you're featuring these videos on your website and if we're featuring these things on our homeless page at the SAC County, because we get a lot of questions from people like, what is, what is the county doing? And it would, I'm really looking forward to seeing what you put together for the county projects, and but I think it's incredible, all that you've done. I mean, you really are creating the foundation for hopefully change in the quality of life for so many people. And so thank you for, and your staff for all that you're doing. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Susan. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and also thank you, LaShelle. A quick question, as far as, and I look forward to seeing the county video as well, to really be able to highlight those accomplishments.
We're gonna get that video next weekend. December 6th, we'll do, that's the warm-up. We're gonna have that video.
One more thing before the end of the year.
We'll do that, so everyone can see.
Can you give, could you please give me a little snapshot? You and I had a discussion about the status of the emergency rental assistance in the, and of course, everything but the city of Sacramento. Again, I know that, I believe the city, there aren't any funds right now in the city, but there are still funds and pending applications in the county. Can you give me a quick rundown of those, some of those numbers, LaShelle, if you don't mind?
Yes.
If you have them.
So fortunately, yes, I do know them off the top of my head, because we live, eat, and breathe these numbers. There is approximately $30 million still left on the county for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. In the city, however, they did receive a modest increase, but it was less than $1 million. So the majority of funds are still available within the county, and we have over 6,000 people who are still on that waiting list. And given the amount of money, we will be able to really get around to quite a few families. So we're very excited that we still have funds on the county side.
And it's still in the county, just like in the city, it's priorities given to folks who are facing eviction. Is that correct?
That is correct.
In terms of the applications, because so my office still gets a lot of questions about that, you know, applications in the queue, as you're aware. But thank you, LaShelle. I very much appreciate our discussions and very excited about a lot of projects that you are pursuing in District 3, and just really look forward to supporting those projects and working with you to provide more permanent supportive housing options for folks. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Chair. I, too, will pile on with my expression of gratitude to the agency and to your very capable staff. In terms of the video and the projects that were featured, I know that there's, you know, kind of a distinction certainly between the city and the county in terms of how the agency operates and where those projects lie, but I just also want to take a moment and kind of state the obvious that even though those projects are in the city of Sacramento, many of them are housing folks that receive countywide services. And so I don't want us to leave the item today thinking that there's kind of a mutually exclusive nature to what SHRA does in terms of the projects. And of course, the investments that we've made sometimes, and in fact, probably many times, are in partnership with the city, and Marisol Village is a great example where this board will remember, we've actually contributed ARPA dollars recently to make sure that one of the final phases is completely funded. So again, want to thank you and your staff, and, Ms. Chair, I just thought it was worth noting that we shouldn't just kind of compartmentalize what it is that our joint housing authority does.
Point well taken, and thank you for saying so, Mrs. Serna.
If I could just add, Supervisor Serna, because I don't want to build up the county video, because there's overlap. So you're gonna see some of the same things because the county, like you said, has contributed to Marisol Village. The county has contributed to each one of the Home Key Projects. So there really has been a lot of cooperation, and there is overlap between the two jurisdictions.
Okay, thanks, LaShelle. Anything else you wanted to close with? Otherwise, Susanna did an excellent job in presenting it.
Yes, she did. And just a big thank you to the staff. You know, they really work tirelessly. They do an excellent job. On the Emergency Rental Assistance Program is just phenomenal that they've been able to stand that program up, hire staff, train them, and start getting money out the door and meeting incredible deadlines. But the entire staff is just so dedicated to the work that they do. I just really want to thank them. And I also really, it's hard for me to even comprehend that this is your last budget meeting with the agency, Supervisor Chair Natoli. You've known me for the 20 years that I've been at SHRA, and you knew me before I came to SHRA, exactly. So I just can't say how much we really have appreciated your support over the years and our working relationship. Thank you so much.
Thank you, LaShelle. Appreciate that very much. Okay, if there's another free question. We have any, I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone on the phone?
Do not have anyone on the phone.
All righty. Then with that being known, let's have a motion. Chair, move.
Second.
All right. We've seconded to approve the budget as presented. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you all. All right.
Ready? Okay. Item 43, authorize the issuance and sale of County of Sacramento Airport system subordinate revenues note in notes in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $50 million outstanding at any one time and approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of a revolving credit agreement relating thereto and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Good morning, Chair Natoli and board members. I'm Colin Bettis, the County Debt Officer. The item before you now is to authorize the, an airport short-term financing facility subordinate revenue notes not to exceed $50 million. Due to significant sustained passenger growth at Sacramento International, the Department of Airports anticipates investing in significant capital improvements in, at multiple facilities, which are included in the Airport Master Plan document approved by the board on February 22nd, 2022. Major projects include parking facilities, a consolidated rental car facility, new and widened roadways, a pedestrian bridge connecting Terminal B and Concourse B, and additional concourse gates. To support the cash flow needs of the Department of Airports, the Office of Budget and Debt Management issued an RFQ to identify a group of banks that would offer a variety of short-term financing options, and then issued an RFP to the qualified banks for a revolving line of credit. Seven banks responded, and Wells Fargo was selected due to the most advantageous terms. The terms are a three-year financing facility with available extensions upon board approval. It will be, there will be three rates associated with this financing: an unutilized fee of 0.17%, a tax-exempt and alternative minimum tax rate of 80% of daily simple secured overnight financing rate, or SOFR, plus 0.35%, and taxable rate of 80% of daily SOFR, simple SOFR, plus 0.53%. Key reasons for utilizing a short-term variable rate financing facility include the ability to allow for just-in-time financing for the exact amount of any of the projects to avoid any overborrowing. It also provides for a lower cost of financing during the construction period and allows for timing long-term fixed-rate bonds to be timed to meet appropriate market conditions. As we are aware, current long-term fixed rates are currently well above historical averages. A TAFRA hearing was conducted on November 7th, and no public comments were offered up at that time. This concludes my presentation. We have Chris Wimsit of the Department of Airports to respond to any project-related questions, and I believe that we have Jenna McGann from Oric and Brian Galucci from PFM, both via Skype, to answer any questions related to the financing. I am aware that Jenna McGann may only have a few more minutes before she has another meeting to attend to.
Okay. Thanks, Colin. Let me go to board members. Any questions for Jenna, who's on the phone, or Mr. Bettis, or Mr. Wimsit? Seeing none, sounds like very good report. And do we have any members of the public, Madam Clerk?
We do not.
Okay. All right. Then with that, I'll bring you back to the board for any further follow-up questions or on a motion.
Move the item.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the recommendation as outlined in the written and verbal report. Thanks to all the folks that worked on this. Thank you, Jenna, for being on the phone. Nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, very good. Thank you much.
All right. Item number 11, enact an urgency fee ordinance relating to installation of water meters.
Item number 44. You said item number 11. 11 o'clock item.
Oh, I'm sorry. What did I, I don't even know what I said.
No, no, item 44.
Okay, it wasn't just me. I thought I heard 11, too. Michael Peterson, Director of Water Resources. Your Board is act, is being asked to enact an urgency fee ordinance related to the installation of water meters with new residential homes. As you're aware, every new connection within the state is required by state regulation to have a water meter installed in order to measure and charge the property owner based on the meter, what's measured at the meter. Typically, this is done by the home builder, and it's one of the last steps in the construction before final occupancy. However, in late September, we learned through conversations with one or two builders that the availability of water meters was becoming scarce, and this is part of the sort of the longstanding supply chain issues related to COVID, and we're seeing up to eight months for water meters to be acquired once they're ordered. The issue is that as homes were coming to final occupancy and transitioning to sales, they still had no water meters. So in order to allow new homes to continue, our staff developed the idea of an urgency ordinance where we would collect a fee, $1,500 for every one-inch meter and $2,000 for every one-and-a-half-inch meter that would be received by the developer. As they've already ordered their meters and while they wait for those to come in, we would have the ability, if needed, eight, nine months down the road, to install meters if that builder ultimately was never able to acquire their own meters. The purpose of it is to ensure that homes continue to be sold, that they can be occupied. It provides us the means to install a meter at a later date if the developer is not ultimately able to acquire and install the meters themselves. If they are, then we can return that fee to them and they're made whole.
Michael, can I just ask you, so are you just gonna charge a flat rate for, because those homes will be occupied?
They'll be occupied.
Right. So you're just charging a flat rate to the homeowner until the meter's installed?
That is correct. So this ordinance would also allow us to start out at a flat rate, and once the meter is installed, then they would be transitioned to a metered rate.
How's the flat rate calculated, just on the service?
The flat rate is, we still have a flat rate in our schedule.
Right, right.
So that's what we would utilize, our current flat rate fee. Homeowners, as they take ownership, they are provided information that we develop with BIA to inform them that, of the issue with the water meter, the temporary unavailability, and that at some point in the future, either the builder or agency will follow up with the meter installation, and at that point, they would transition to metered rate. We worked very quickly with the BIA to develop this ordinance. They reviewed it. They're in support of it, I believe. They provided a letter in support that was distributed to all of you. It was, it was recognized that this was, this is going to be critical. City of Elgro, City of Ranch Cordova are also in concurrence with this approach. And just to be clear, the agency does not have the authority to, to, you know, hold up a final permit. That's the land use agency's decision. So the payment of this fee does not substitute for the requirement to install a meter, but it allows us to let them move forward until that meter does come in, come in and be installed.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Michael. Thanks for quick action. Do you have a speaker sign up on this? Any former questions? Seeing none, then Vance Gerard, Vance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. I'll be quick. It's not very, oh.
I'm moving it up for you.
Thank you. It's not very often that the BIA will be up here before you, asking you to support fee ordinance, but that is definitely the case in this situation. Mr. Peterson hit the nail on the head. They worked very quickly and very creatively to create an ordinance that's gonna allow our builders to continue selling homes to new families in the area that otherwise would just be sitting empty. So the language reflects a lot of the suggestions that came from us and our membership. We're greatly appreciative of that. So we thank Mr. Peterson, his staff, and we thank all of you today for supporting this ordinance and getting folks into new homes. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Vance. Appreciate you being here, weighing in. All right, we did your written correspondence on behalf of the BIA as well. So do we have anybody on the phone?
I don't have anyone on the phone.
Okay, very good. Then bring you back to the board for any comments or motion.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, move and second to approve the staff recommendation. Our thanks again to Michael and to others who've worked on this. Please vote. Oh, Anne, did you want to weigh in on this?
I just wanted to thank Michael Peterson and his team. This issue, when we learned of it, they acted very, very quickly to come up with a solution, and I just think it warrants. I want to thank him myself as well.
Very good. Thank you, Anne. Appreciate those comments. Okay.
Unanimous vote.
There's an echo of praise in the chambers this morning, so, and that's great. Nice. Okay. All right. That takes us to the morning's agenda. We do have a closed session following this, and then we'll return at 2:00 for the afternoon session. So thank you, Madam Clerk, for, and we'll recess into closed session and return to. Good afternoon. Want to call back into session the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, the November 15, 2022 meeting, afternoon session, and welcome folks who've joined us for the afternoon portion of the meeting. So with that, I'll turn to our clerk, Flo Evans, to call a roll to reestablish quorum.
Yes. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. We do, we have a number of regular agenda items. We have folks, persons joining us wanting to address the board off agenda, and since we did keep the off agenda items open today due to an earlier glitch, we're gonna go ahead and hear from that person right now. So it's Jason Mallory. Jason, if you'd like to come forward, we'll give you three minutes on off agenda. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. You guys, can you hear me well?
Yes, we can.
All right. Well, my name is Jason Mallory, and essentially, I'm here reaching out for some help. I'm suffering some very unfair and unlawful treatment within Sacramento County. I am not sure all of the reasonings behind it, but essentially, I was, rather than having a squatter removed from my house due to civil code superseding civil right, removing the upholding of penal code, I was arrested for unlawful entry and detainment of my own home while a squatter was allowed to stay in my home, a person who's never had tenancy and is unwelcome at my house. I have had bad luck trying to move forward through internal affairs. I requested paperwork. I, two weeks later, then went to pick up that paperwork at the Civil Bureau, was told I'd get it mailed. It was mailed the next day. I also got that next morning 25 instances of my data, personal information, found on the dark web, according to my identity theft protection insurance. The timing is correlative. I'm not making an accusation. I'm just stating, I'm having that kind of luck in this process, and I'm just reaching out for help in that I feel I've been done wrong. So, Rich Desmond, you're my county supervisor, and I'm asking for help.
Rich, go ahead.
Thank you, Jason. Have you reached out?
Have you reached out to my office yet?
I, I did give a call, and I was told that it wasn't an issue you would be interested in. So I am here.
Okay. Send an email, send another email to my office. I'll make sure my staff gets that email and directs it to me directly, and we'll be in touch with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Good luck. Okay. With that, then, no other off-agenda speakers. We'll go into the afternoon items.
And we don't have any off-agenda callers either.
Okay. All right. So you want to close out then now?
Okay, yeah.
And we want to close out, so.
Let me just get that closed. Okay, so your first afternoon item, number 45, is the Alberta Project. This is a rezone large lot tentative subdivision map, small lot tentative subdivision map, and design review for a property located south of Alberta Road and west of 16th Street in the Rio Linda, Alberta community. The environmental determination is exempt.
Okay. Mr. Puhuli. Chris, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Chair Natoli, board members, Chris Puhuli with the Planning and Environmental Review Division. It's my pleasure this afternoon to present this item for the Alberta 245 subdivision. It does represent a large-scale residential development within the Alberta specific plan. The project has been in process for a number of years, so we're excited to be bringing this project before the board for consideration. The project site is comprised of two parcels totaling 248 gross acres, shown in red cross hatch on the graphic. The site is located south of Alberta Road, west of 16th Street, and north of U Street in the Rio Linda, Alberta community. The site is currently vacant and contains natural drainage corridors running across the site. As I noted, the project is located within the Alberta specific plan, which provides for the transition of the area from a rural agricultural residential area to more of a suburban residential land use type pattern, and includes a land use plan, policies, and standards to guide future development in the Alberta specific plan. Staff prepared the exhibit on the right to provide some context for the project. To date, the county has approved three tentative maps within the Alberta specific plan area, including the North Borough and North Borough 2 project, shown in orange and purple in the northeast portion of the plan area, and the Alberta 78 project, shown in green in the southeast portion of the plan area. Planning has received and is currently processing time extension requests for all three of those tentative maps. We're also processing the Alberta 59 and 1/2 North subdivision project, shown in yellow, and the Alberta 59 and 1/2 South subdivision, shown in blue. Those two projects share a common applicant as the project before you today for consideration, which is shown in pink on the, on the lower portion of the graphic. The graphic on this slide shows the current zoning for the proposed Alberta 245 subdivision. Currently, the project site is zoned primarily RD5. The southernmost boundary of the site, north of U Street, is zoned RD2. The westernmost boundary of the site is zoned AR1, and a small portion of the site fronting on 16th Street is zoned RD20. The project site is surrounded by rural homes, except to the southwest, where there is an existing single-family residential subdivision. While the properties to the north and east are currently being used as rural residences, the specific plan identifies these areas for future suburban development, including single-family residential and commercial. The applicant is requesting a rezone, large lot tentative map, small lot tentative map, and a design review to demonstrate compliance with countywide design guidelines. I'll provide a little bit more detail on each of these entitlement requests with the following slides. In 2007, the board approved a rezone for the project site to align with the newly adopted Alberta specific plan. The, in 2014, the board approved an amendment to the drainage master plan, which led to some minor changes in the specific plan's land use plan. In response to the updated land use plan, the proposed rezone includes minor adjustments to the site's zoning and includes increases to the RD20 and AR1 designations and decreases to the RD2 and RD5 designations. The large lot tentative map proposes 11 low-density residential lots, one multifamily lot, two park sites, and a number of lots related to public facilities and infrastructure. The large lot map creates logical patterns for phasing and infrastructure that are independent of existing parcel lines or proposed residential lots. The large lot map is for master development and financing only. No improvements are proposed as part of the large lot map. Subdivision maps will be recorded with improvements on the large lots shown on this exhibit. The small lot tentative map proposes 682 single-family residential lots, one multifamily lot, two park lots, and a number of lots related to public facilities and infrastructure. The small lot tentative map also includes the abandonment of easements and portions of right-of-way. So this slide, which shows the tentative map, has a little bit more detail, a little, and is a little easier to navigate. The subdivision shows 664 residential lots in the RD5 zone. Larger RD2 and AR1 lots are located along the southern and western boundaries of the subdivision. Consistent with the specific plan, these larger lots are intended to create a buffer between denser residential uses internal to the project site and agricultural residential uses outside of the specific plan. The roughly nine-acre multifamily site fronts on 16th Street on the eastern portion of the subdivision. Two parks are centrally located throughout the subdivision for ease of access. Two drainage corridors travel through the subdivision, and the subdivision also includes an open space lot and power line corridor lot planned for trail facilities. Primary access to the subdivision will be served via U Street to the south, 16th Street to the east, and Alberta Road to the north. Alberta Road and 16th Street will both have landscape center medians. All three streets will be bordered by landscape corridors consisting of trees, shrubs, and ground cover, along with separated sidewalks. Loop Road and Dry Creek Road provide the backbone street infrastructure for the subdivision. These streets contain 48-foot rights-of-way and are wider than other internal streets, which will be 32-foot minor streets. Sidewalks throughout the subdivision include separated sidewalk, I'm sorry, streets throughout the subdivision will include separated sidewalk. Trail facilities generally are co-located with infrastructure. 10-foot multi-use and equestrian trails are proposed on either side of the drainage corridors along the power, and along the power line corridor. Trail crossings will be provided to allow residents to easily navigate the community. As an example, residents in the southern portion of the subdivision would be able to access the park site in the central portion of the subdivision via the drainage trail crossing. On-street bike trails and a smaller eight-foot multi-use trail are planned along Dry Creek and Loop Roads, which are the backbone streets of the subdivision, as I mentioned earlier. The project was presented to the Rio Linda, Alberta CPAC, the Design Review Advisory Committee, and the Planning Commission for their consideration. The DRAK recommended the project be found in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines, and both the CPAC and Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the requested entitlements. I do want to point out on the slide, the, the Planning Commission's vote was four yes, zero known, and one absent, not an abstention. During all three meetings, the boundary condition between the Alberta 245 subdivision and the single-family residential lots to the southwest and rural residential lots to the west was discussed. Some neighboring residents provided comments that they would like to see a block wall or a CMU wall along those boundaries for purposes of privacy. However, the specific plan includes an objective stating that Alberta will not be a sound-wall suburb, but a social and walkable rural village. Therefore, the subdivision, as presented today and as supported by staff, does not include block walls on either of those boundaries.
What is the condition for, what does it require? Just a wood fence?
Correct, a wood fence.
That's pretty suburban, too.
Sure. Wooden, or there could be alternative designs. There will be a design review conducted later, but it will not include a wall, a masonry wall.
Okay.
Staff's review of the proposed project determined that the project complies with applicable general plan and community plan policies. The project complies also with specific plan policies and standards, and is conditioned to complete improvements pursuant to the specific plan, including all roadway, drainage, and trail improvements. The subdivision is compatible with the planned density of development in the specific plan. And lastly, the project was supported by the Planning Commission, Rio Linda, Alberta, CPAC, and DRAK. Therefore, staff recommends the board recognize the exempt status of the project under SEQA and adopt the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, approve the rezone ordinance, and approve the large lot and small lot tentative maps, subject to conditions and findings, and find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. In closing, I do want to mention that joining me today are representatives from County Transportation and Water Resources, and of course, we have the applicant team, their representatives. I'd also like to note the, the work of the lead planner on the project, Ms. Emma Patton, who is also in attendance today. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay. We'll go to board members. Patrick Kennedy.
Thank you, sir. Chris, I, I saw the, I appreciate having the trails exhibit in there. I'm going to be looking for that just so, with my SACOG hat on, whenever we come forward with something. And I saw from, you know, I could see that it looked like there was connectivity, but I just want to ensure that we're always, when we look at these projects, you know, not just internally, but we're ensuring that we're making a concerted effort to make sure that the, that there's connectivity between project to project on our trail system. And that's being done here, I take it.
That is absolutely right. In fact, we also coordinated, and transportation staff could speak to it more, in more detail, but we also coordinated on the active transportation plan to ensure that those connections are provided.
Great. Perfect. Great. Good answer.
Thanks. Chris, I wanted to ask you about, I know it's covered in the, in the staff report, and briefing yesterday, it's pointed out the condition as it relates to potable water. And this board, as noted in the report, had a workshop June of last year. I thought it was longer ago than that, but, and if I take from the, different from the condition, which just outlines what certain things would have to be done, but as I understand, there's still, quoting from the report, "There is currently no planned solution for a supplemental water source to support the development of the specific plan." And even though you condition it, and I know, again, obviously, Rio Linda, Alberta Water District is a responsible entity, and you said you had somebody from the water agency staff here, but I guess I'm curious, so what's, what's the thinking, current thinking? Because again, we had discussions about what the cost of doing that, what the supplemental source might be. Obviously, we had folks from the Water District here. Our staff were here, a part of that discussion. So we're basically with a recommendation coming forward to move forward with approval, you know, with 245 conditions, but 216 is called out. But I guess I'm curious, because this issue is not a, not a new issue. It's one that goes long before I'm sure this plan was even submitted. There's been some discussions over time with the ability and capability of that, of the Water District to provide that suburban level of water, both for a household as well as any other contemplated uses, but also then for fire flow and so forth. So I guess I'm curious, the staff analysis, because the recommendation is to proceed ahead here today.
It is, which is both consistent with the direction provided by the board when we had the workshop to condition, to move forward with conditioning these projects, consistent with how we handled projects in the past, the projects that I mentioned beforehand. And so condition 216, Rio Linda, Alberta Community Water District condition, does require a water service agreement prior to recording of small lot tentative maps. I think you correctly point out that there's a lot of work that needs to be done between the applicant team and the Water District to satisfy that condition. And perhaps the applicant team and their representatives, or the property owner's representative, who is also here today, may be able to speak more to their current thinking in terms of being able to satisfy that.
Yeah. That would be helpful. But I guess I want to just be clear that with the approvals that are being sought here today and being recommended, that until and unless, not just that condition's satisfied, but that there is a, a, you know, I guess a verifiable source of water to serve this and all the future homeowners and all the other future users, then the development can't proceed. There's no phase approach. We'll let you do 20 houses, or we'll let you do, you know, first phase. By the time that the small lot subdivisions come in, that agreement needs to be in place and/or they'd have to seek to amend that condition before this board. Is that?
That is correct.
That's accurate. Okay. And but, so you haven't been briefed on the status? Again, we can certainly turn to the applicant, and they'll have an opportunity in a moment. So staff hasn't been kept apprised? I would think that since we're conditioning, we're the land use authority. We rely upon the water purveyors to, you know, secure those agreements with applicants. That I would highly suggest for this and the other projects, again, it's not in my supervisory district, but that planning staff, along with anybody else that would be involved, it needs to be kept apprised. I mean, the developer doesn't have to report to you, but somebody needs to be in touch so we know what the status is. Because again, there may be difference of opinion about what the status is, and that's fair, I guess, as well. So I, I, again, I just think this needs to be tracked over time. This is an issue that goes back, you know, a couple of decades, at least in conversation, if not more. So I.
That's correct. And I, and I apologize if I didn't, I should have mentioned, we have been in constant communication with the Water District and their general manager, Mr. Tim Shaw. So we have been speaking to them.
Okay.
We do know, based on the workshop, and I'm assuming we will likely hear the same thing from the applicant team today, that the real heavy lift in terms of breaking loose, the specific plan, is on the transportation infrastructure. They've been working actively trying to resolve that. I think once there's a path forward there, then they would likely pivot to addressing this water, water issue. But again, I'll let them speak.
Okay. Again, I guess I want to just, and you've said it, have confidence that you, planning staff, and the department is kept in the loop, certainly with the other public entity, obviously, the applicants, and, you know, their principles will keep you apprised as well. But you're doing the analytics behind this. You're bringing the recommendation to us. You've brought forward, along with other departments and contributors, to the report, the conditions that we're being asked to impose here today. And I just want to be clear, and I am in my understanding, that you folks are kept apprised of the status. Obviously, transportation is a hurdle, and how that's going to be financed and phased and so forth. But the water, you know, you can put roads in, don't necessarily need water for that, but you gotta have water to serve the development, so. Okay. All right. Thanks. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Not yet. All right. With that, then, thank you, Chris, and I'll invite the applicant or this team representatives to come forward. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and fellow supervisors, staff, and members of the public. My name is Tim Kim, and I'm representing the landowner on Alberta 245. Pleasure to be here. We have been working on this project for over 20 years, so we're especially excited to come here and hopefully have our maps approved. We had the specific plan in EIR, as you probably saw on the staff report, approved about 15 years ago, and we have since received support, as Mr. Puhuli said, from the community and the design review and the planning commission. So I have a few members from our team here to help answer questions. My engineers will answer all the hard questions, and I'll answer the easy ones. So I'm not going to do a separate presentation. Staff did a great job, so I'm here to answer questions.
That's true. Okay, yeah. Mr. Serna.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here to, to help answer some questions. So to dovetail off of what the chair mentioned earlier, having actually worked on this project myself several now decades ago, you know, it's no secret that water's always been kind of a challenge for the area and the history. of a challenge for the area, and the history of the quality of water, not just the availability of water, out in this part of the county's also been difficult at times. But I thought at one point, there was interest, or maybe even plans to have conjunctive use, including surface water from Folsom. Is that not the, the case now, or is that still in play?
We had worked on a number of solutions and had been supporting the Water District, you know, financially for a period of time, and there were a number of different options, but quite frankly, we had so many hurdles with other large infrastructure items that our focus recently has been, well, it was drainage. We did a lot of work with your staff to do extremely detailed drainage studies. That was part of the delay, and then we did our, our design on our maps, and then we've been working on transportation, as Mr. Puhuli said, and we understand from staff that we'll be able to tackle this specific plan. Right now, you're working on North Vineyard Station. I know that's kind of imminent. Then it's Elverta specific plan. So the owners have asked me, hey, let's get through the maps, let's get that done, because we're spending a lot of money, and then let's tackle each of these issues. So our plan is to, at least for our ownership, get the maps approved, work on that transportation, and then pull the other owners in the specific plan together, such as Jeff Pembstein, who's here today, and talk about how do we tackle, you know, the water service agreement with the Water District. So hopefully, we're close, and we'll be able to tackle that next year.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Any other questions or comments for Tim? All right, Tim, you got the easy questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Appreciate that.
All right. I don't have anybody signed to speak. Are there any members of the public here, or anybody on the phone that wishes to address the board on this item?
We do not have anyone on the phone.
Okay. I don't see anyone else. Anybody else from the development team then, Tim? Is that it? Okay. All right, bring it back to the board, and I see Supervisor Frost is in the queue.
I wanted to just thank staff who have briefed me on this subdivision and congratulate the owner and Mr. Kim for your progress here. I thought it looked like a great project, consistent with what's going on in, in that area, and I'm assured that it's consistent with our general plan. I know all about the water issues, transportation, finance plan. I've had so many conversations with different subdivisions. It's difficult. I know Mr. Pembstein has had that conversation with me, but I'm, I'm assured that the systems are in place, that we'll see that, that all these requirements are met as you're working through it, and I'm delighted to support the project and move approval.
All right, moving second to approve the staff recommendation, including the exempt status of the environmental document and all the various pertinent maps and approvals. And again, there's no one signed to speak, so with that, we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, too. The team?
All right.
Okay, next item.
Item 46, Workshop on Establishing Code Amendment and Other Long Range Major Project Priorities.
Okay. I'll just note for the board's information, too, we did, during the break, we're able to retrieve the video for SHRA, so before we close the meeting, we can maybe watch that. That's okay? At the end, yeah, at the end? Okay. All right, so you get to watch the movie at the end. All right, Mr. Todd Smith, you're up.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Todd Smith, your planning director, here today on the perhaps long-awaited prioritization workshop regarding our zoning code updates and a number of other long-range planning activities. So just by way of background, briefly, historically, the Planning and Environmental Review Division has completed between two and four zoning code updates per year, and that helped us maintain the zoning code, keep it current, and address issues in a timely fashion. Over the last five years, really since 2017, we've seen significant increases in legislative mandates, and that obviously becomes our focus in terms of zoning code updates, to make sure that we are consistent with state law as it evolves. And then adding to that, we've got a number of requests from board members, which is perfectly acceptable and appropriate, and other departments, and those have increased over the years as well. And in the context, all of that, our staffing and budget has not kept pace, it has not been able to keep up with that demand. And so the purpose of today's workshop really is to address this by establishing a five-year, at least as proposed, prioritization plan that we would like to see evaluated on an annual basis, to make sure that we, that our work in terms of either updating the zoning code or other pieces of land use regulation are consistent with the board's priorities as we know them to be, as well as obviously staying abreast of updated legislation over the years. So what we've done is put together this matrix that is in the board package, and we've grouped some of these items in four big categories. First, requirements and mandates. And so these are projects that are prioritized based on whether they're required by either state or federal law, whether there are requirements in the county's general plan or other county policy. A couple of examples here, you know, obviously, is it required by federal or state law? Does the project implement a general plan requirement? Does the project address or support housing production? Does the project support the board's climate emergency declaration or the pending climate action plan? Just a side note on that, even though the climate action plan is not yet adopted, we are planning to implement that once it is adopted, and we want to make sure that that's included in this prioritization discussion. And then finally, does the project directly improve economic development, either on a countywide or a large-scale basis? So the other three categories are, number two, whether the project is funded via grants or other outside funding. And so often is the case, when we have outside funding sources, those have deadlines, we have to make sure that we're complying with those deadlines to use the grants appropriately. Third category is finishing what we started, and so I mentioned all the legislative updates that have happened for the last five years. Those become often urgent priority, and so some things that we may have started previously gets deprioritized, and when we put things down and pick them back up, that just takes extra time, extra cost. It's not very efficient. Finally, all other requests. And so this last bucket or category is all those that don't meet at least one of the first three budget or priority categories, and these types of requests have historically been given a lower priority in the, in the matrix, and these, obviously, based on today's discussion, can be adjusted based on today's conversation or as the board directs. And so finally, I want to talk about some of the other considerations that we're dealing with. Obviously, the zoning code updates are not the only thing we're working on. We currently have about a 27% vacancy rate in terms of our number of positions, that's 15 vacancies, not including our administrative positions, and those range from planning technician at the entry level to principal planner. And so we are actively working to fill those positions, and it's proving to be very difficult. I'm sure you've all heard this from a number of departments and even outside organizations. This is nothing new. Secondly, we oversee a wide variety of programs and services, separate from the zoning code updates. These are all included in Attachment 3 of your package, and a number of those items are also consistent with the board's priorities, and those are also funded with certain, perhaps, application fees or other funding agreements. And then finally, we want to recognize that this matrix is pretty ambitious, given the current constraints, and those include the staffing levels I talked about, our budget allocation, and other responsibilities. And so depending on how the conversation goes today, we want to recognize that each one of these efforts, either individually or if they're combined, will take subsequent work, including by our environmental review team or SEQA consultants, that are a big part of our, our team. I would be remiss if I did not mention them. And that may result in a decrease in, in certain productivity of other projects or other priorities, and it's all a balancing act. That's what we want to get to today. So just real briefly, our recommendation is for the board to review the matrix, including those four priorities, and then the resulting recommended project prioritization by fiscal year, and those are included in Attachments 1 and 2, as well as the other per projects and ongoing responsibilities in Attachment 3. And of course, the board is, is welcome to modify the matrix if you deem it necessary and appropriate, including shifting around those priorities and sub-priorities to better reflect the board's priorities. And then finally, endorse that final matrix that would prioritize all of these zoning code and land use projects and direct us to return on an annual basis, to provide an update on ongoing activities and reprioritize the list as necessary. And my last slide, which is very hard to read, is just a comprehensive list of the zoning code updates. There's a separate list of all the special planning area, neighborhood preservation area ordinances, there's 68 of those. We didn't feel like weighing you down with all of those today, but they're in the mix as well. And with that, I will turn it back to the board for any questions and obviously discussion. And I do want to mention Wendy Hartman, principal planner with our zoning administration team, and Chris, who was just here, both who are in supporting roles today, because some of this work will be done maybe by them.
Great. Well, thank you, Todd, and thanks, Chris and Wendy both. One, I want to certainly thank planning staff and certainly kind of executive for getting this to us. I know, I for one, have, you know, been kind of harping on this for many months, I just think it's important, as we see things coming for this board, and then they get, you know, get a bookmark, and, and, you know, then we don't hear about them for a while, so I think this is really important. I think it's important for the board's direction, but also for the work and tracking of the work. So again, having the matrix is really important. I know Supervisor Desmond's punched up, I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts on this, and I shared this in briefing, but there's many things here that are, of, you know, competing priority, and I think, Todd, you set the stage well for obviously some of the challenges, just in having the workforce to, to complete the work. But a couple of things come to mind, and it's kind of the order which they would be taken up and the years which they would be initiated and completed. Two that I didn't mention yesterday in briefing, one is, as it relates to carbon capture and sequestration, which is shown to be initiated in the 23, 24 fiscal year, and then it can be completed the following year, so basically a three to four-year window there. The reason I raise that is that we've got folks who have certainly, I don't know how much they've approached planning staff, but there are some, beyond, you know, smaller projects and offsets and so forth, there are contemplated, I think, applications that will require review, both at the state, maybe even federal level, in our county, in the delta, down in the lower islands, significantly large projects, and I think having some, you know, foresight as to how we, assuming we have some local land use authority that's still vested with us after others get through with it, to be able to look at certainly the aspects, you know, it'll be, I'm sure, safety aspects that'll, people want answered and so forth, but if they're talking about, you know, a long-term storage of millions of tons of sequestered carbon, you know, four or five miles below the, the surface, but you know, what does it mean to, you know, certainly the people that live above ground, the critters, and, and just our general fragile environment in the delta? And so, again, without any more than just what you had in here, I don't know what was being anticipated, but I think we ought to be prepared, because, and those aren't on a fast track, those will be projects that will be multi-year, probably any level of consideration at different, as I said, state and federal levels, but I assume our local land use authority is still going to have some force and effect as it relates to, you know, projects. And then I know you also, our climate action plan, talked about how this would be applied in the rural agricultural areas, and so I think those components, again, are not lost in the planning department, but this board doesn't have those conversations weekly or monthly, and I think it's important that you have some guidance, and again, it may not be a full-fledged zoning code section, but to have some guidance around those issues and, you know, and certainly working with partners both in the business arena, certainly in the climate arena, in the, in the agricultural arena, and in the communities that might, you know, be affected either positively or maybe with impacts that, I won't say they're negative necessarily, but where there's impacted communities. So I was going to suggest that that might be an earlier order of work, and I'm just going to put some ideas out here, I know we've got two others, members that are in the queue, so I'll, I'll leave that for a moment. The other one that seems to be really far down the list, when we, you know, we have conversations a lot about a weekly basis, or certainly on a monthly basis here, about housing and housing crisis and so forth, and there's been much discussion about tiny homes over the years, and yet we're not, we're still not prepared, and not even looking, looking at the matrix, you weren't even going to initiate that until 25, 26. And so we're talking four to five years out, at least in this work program, as, as outlined. And I would just suggest that, you know, unless that crisis subsides anytime soon, that tiny homes and having some policy direction around that, and there are, you know, some accommodations with ADUs and, and manufactured houses and so forth, so that one seems to me that, again, nothing else to have guidance, it may not be a full-fledged code section, but to know how we could handle that in a way that might promote that, you know, in a compatible way. Lastly, I would just say the two items I did raise, and we can talk more about them today, but the one is relates to the rural ag tourism, and where we've actually have folks who want to play by the rules, but the rules don't, don't provide a pathway for them to, to actually do that, and yet we have other folks who choose not to, you know, and they make their own decisions about conducting businesses in, in, you know, out of their homes or residential properties in, in the rural areas. And I think our county is well-served to take that up, obviously going to require some community work, and I recognize that staff work, when you have to go out to the community councils, and I would trust that my successor, that represents, would represent a lot of those rural areas, would want to be engaged, but that's an important one. We have some real-life examples that are, you know, several years in vintage now, and this doesn't contemplate until at least two years out to actually getting to, you know, to some completion on that particular topic. And then lastly, and with this board dealt with it, and I certainly, I saw that they actually ran their application through the tattoo establishment in the town of Franklin. This board saw fit to waive the fees and allow the application to move forward, and again, I know Wendy worked on that, and I think Chris, you and Todd did as well. But that's one of those where the separation requirements that were in the zoning code, comprehensive zoning code update that we did in 2015, we, we had some different requirements there. I think that's worth a look, and I don't know that other supervisors, as it relates to some of the other uses, thrift stores and so forth, are getting any feedback, but that does affect, you know, location of businesses, and we had at least one example where that got to be problematic because of the non-conforming status, status of that, but, so I'll leave it at that. Now I have three members of the board in the queue, so, talked long enough, so we'll go to Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Cerner.
Sorry, Desmond, my follow-up, is that, just, just so that we're, because you said tiny homes, and tiny homes now mean three different things to three different people. So, so just clarification, so I know where, how to follow up and ask questions. When you talk, when you're talking about tiny homes, what, what are you talking about?
Well, either developments that would be constituted of tiny homes, and/or how they, how they would fit, I guess, in the matrix of what's allowed on, you know, say a single-family lot that didn't have a, a primary home to it, and I don't know what was contemplated here, it just says housing on the program, D10, so I don't know what that references there, but I guess having a policy that would give good guidance around where tiny homes would potentially be allowed, either by right and/or by use permit, and we have some, you know, some methods for people to pursue it, but not the, you know, the tiny, tiny homes, and certainly any quantity of that. I mean, if somebody wanted to do a subdivision of 10 tiny houses, I think they'd have, they'd have some obstacles, and maybe, you know, Wendy or Todd could address them. So I was looking, maybe have something comprehensive around tiny homes, Patrick, and I know we talked about this at the sanitation district, too, about sewer, water, how those fees get calculated and so forth, but, and I don't know what planning staff was contemplating either, so that might be a good question for them.
Okay, thank you, that, that helps, and I, I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and actually, it's, I, I'm glad you went first, Mr. Chair, because you made me think of a lot of additional things that I didn't notice, and that was actually one of my questions for Todd. First, let me preface this, Todd, with appreciate all the work, your work and the work of staff, and appreciate the ongoing discussion that you had with me, and I just, I got to say, I love it when you introduce yourself as your planning director. It just seems, it just sounds so great. Can I ask the other directors, maybe, to come up here and introduce themselves as your transportation director? But, no, Todd, I- But, no, Todd, I thoroughly enjoy, thoroughly enjoy working with you, and I appreciate all the time that you've spent on this. So in terms of that tiny homes item, and that's, again, that's your plan for fiscal year 25, 26, correct, that Chair Netoli was referring to?
That is correct. And just by way of clarification, some of these timeframes are based on, for example, the housing element programs and the timeframes that were identified in that. The same is true of the cap implementation measures that have certain timeframes in the draft climate action plan. Those are charted out consistent with what's in the cap as it stands today.
Okay.
But if there's more specific questions on the tiny homes, I think Wendy might be able to speak to some of the questions Supervisor Kennedy.
Well, I'd like to hear that, actually. What is the scope of this item? And then I'll have some more, you know, follow-up questions.
Good afternoon, Wendy Hartman, your principal planner.
You know, put him a doubt now.
So the biggest issue with tiny homes gets to what really is a tiny home? And HCD, Housing and Community Development, actually classifies most tiny homes as recreational vehicles. And so that is the biggest issue when it comes to both building codes and zoning codes, is a true tiny home is a recreational vehicle, not treated any different than a fifth wheel. When people come to our front counter and say they want to build a tiny home, a lot of times what we talk to them about is that we don't really have any restrictions in our zoning code, other than we do have a minimum width of a home that's facing a street frontage. They could build their house whatever size they wanted, as long as they constructed it in a manner that meets building code. There's been a lot of pressure on HCD and the state on this tiny home issue. And so one of the reasons this has kind of been pushed back, and it does coincide with our housing element, is we're hopeful that the state maybe is going to come up with some changed requirements on how they view these tiny homes, or, you know, does it have to be on a chassis or different things that would make it easier for local jurisdictions than to allow for these types of structures? We did make some concessions with the housing crisis. Those are primarily structures that are associated with the county's emergency shelters, and a lot of times those aren't full dwelling units. So there, we call those tiny homes oftentimes, but they really are not dwelling units. And so that's part of the biggest issue, is we use that terminology for a lot of different structures.
Okay. No, that's helpful, and that is, I mean, I agree with the chair that that's a huge priority, because I think there's a lot of opportunities. But until people understand what it means and what the limitations are and what we're going to be imposing on them, or not, it's, it may be, you know, disincentive for folks who might be exploring that as an option, so, yeah.
I would like to add one more thing. We are in the process with one of our grants doing pre-approved master plans for accessory dwelling units. And one of those units is right around 400 or 500 square feet in size. And so we are currently going through the building permit process so that the plans are essentially, someone can come in and get pre-approved plans, they just need to do their site plan. And those will range from, like I said, between around 400 square feet and 1,200 square feet in size. So that may help fill some of that niche for someone looking for a smaller home.
Okay. And that could capture some of these prefabricated 500-square-foot, you know, tiny homes, as defined or as not.
You're going to miss some though, because a lot of those are probably 200, 250 square feet. The tiny homes, the tiny, tiny homes are, you know, if it's the portal ones, if it's classified like an RV or whatever, you're not going to, you know, you can get 40-foot or 10-foot by 40-foot, but you can't get much wider, never going to tow it down the road. So, you know, you're going to, you're going to miss a lot in that tiny, tiny home category, even what you just described, I would imagine, so.
Well, and not only the size, but, you know, some are coming out, I mean, the products are changing all the time in terms of, does it require a foundation, or can it just stay on a chassis with wheels, you know? So I agree that that is a huge, you know, priority. And so I guess my next question, with your matrix, this is, currently there are some, obviously some very specific things in here, but in each one of these timeframes, there's some discretion, obviously, and I imagine that's the point of this conversation today. But also to see if we want to move any of these up to be done more quickly. You know, and I would certainly, anything that's housing-related or is geared towards helping us alleviate our housing crisis, definitely needs a closer look in terms of if we can, obviously if we have the bandwidth. I want to talk for just a moment about something, you know, Todd, you and I have talked about, Chris and Dave. So in my district, something that really occurs to me, it seems to be a challenge again and again, is some of the SPAs along the commercial corridors, you know, NPAs, I mean, I look at them and tell me if I'm, I mean, SPAs or any planning area, that's along a commercial corridor. Obviously, if it's a neighborhood, it's an NPA. And I know in terms of housing, the NPAs, a lot of times, things are preempted by state law, right? I mean, and the NPA would not be an impediment to having some more flexibility in certain situations, obviously. But in terms of some of these SPAs on these older corridors, and completely respect the process, respect the, I guess, the philosophy behind implementing these and the process that it took to get some of them through. But I think for some of them, they haven't had the desired impact. You know, it hasn't transformed these commercial corridors in a way I think the advocates for these may have envisioned. And I think there are times, under limited circumstances, I think it's important for this board to maybe be able to have some very, you know, very limited flexibility, but flexibility nonetheless, if there is a good project that might help rejuvenate a commercial corridor that is otherwise prohibited by an SPA. And the result of that SPA is just continued deterioration, continued blight, continued, you know, lack of investment in some of these areas. I'm not suggesting in any way, shape, or form to overturn an SPA, but to create a window of an opportunity for this board to make an exception in circumstances. And I think specifically about the Fair Oaks Boulevard corridor plan, because that's obviously a corridor that I'm most familiar with and drive down most frequently, but it's certainly not, I don't think it's unique to that corridor in terms of just looking around. And Todd, you and I have gone on a drive and we've seen these corridors where just, no one's even interested in looking at it because there are so many limitations on them. So that is certainly something I'm interested in, and I know you, it looks like you probably put kind of a placeholder here for SPA, NPA updates, but that's just my two cents at this point.
Phil? Thank you. Todd, I'm looking at attachment one, the matrix, and I'm trying to understand the timing that is referenced. So you have a column that is labeled timeframe anticipated completion. And then you have these colored bars that designate the fiscal year in which progress would be initiated or completed. But in some instances, you have dates that don't fall into that grouping. So how do we interpret that?
So some of these, good question, first of all. Some of these are multi-year efforts. And so in some, for example, in, I'm on the first page of attachment one, where you can see number six, the RD20 zoning code update, which is labeled as continue. Obviously, the anticipated completion is May of 2024, but we're still doing work through this fiscal year, July 1, 2022 to June of next year, but it may continue beyond that timeframe. And in some other cases, for example, number seven and eight, right below that, we've indicated where the funding source for some of these programs ends after the fiscal year that they're in.
Okay. So I understand that, but like, take 21, for instance. You're initiating the SPA, NPA group two, housing element B6, and it's labeled as June 30th, 2026. And it's under the bar that would lead one to believe it's, it would start in 20, or between 2024 and 2025, you see?
Oh, I see that, yes. That could simply be just a typo on our part. But some of those would also span multiple years, depending on the nature of the edits or amendments. But, for example, number 21 at the bottom of.
The same could be said for item 28 and item 29. Those are both initiate, and those are starting in the June of the year after the block of time.
That appears to be correct.
So those are just errors?
That, I think that column is anticipated completion, not initiation. So it's being started in the bar.
Yeah, but the color, the color codes for complete initiate are in the project name.
Oh, okay, yeah.
See what I'm saying? It's, I'm having trouble to, trying to reconcile the dates. It's almost like if you take 28 and 29, if it was 2030, 2026 instead of 27, that makes sense, but not the other, not the way it's.
I think certainly we need to double-check a bunch of these to make sure that we're lining them up as we originally intended.
Okay. I just thought I'd point that out.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Kennedy, back to you.
Thank you very much. Todd, first of all, thank you. This is, obviously, looking at the attachment, everything, you guys put a lot of work into this, and appreciate it, I think it'll save time and effort in the future. On, back to the SPAs and all that, on attachment number two, where you grouped them, how did you determine the grouping and that timing?
So SPA, or sorry, groupings one through four was really based on staff's review of these SPAs and the number of inquiries or interpretation issues perhaps. Just real quick, in the staff report, we obviously identified the most inquiries that we have, and sometimes, because of their age, some of the difficulty in implementation. And so to us, that means they're ripe for some sort of review and amendment of some type. It may vary depending on the SPA in question. So that's one through four. Those in groups five and six are where we receive fewer development inquiries, and so they're lower in terms of our thinking of prioritization of amendments. And then further below that, group seven, which are those in the city limits of Ranch Cordova, the county has no land use authority anymore, so we don't need to do much other than rescind them. And I think that's the extent of our thinking, at least in terms of prioritization in those groups.
Okay. On the cap, which you touched on briefly, you know, how do you see the cap fitting? Because the cap is so overarching and impacts everything that we're, I mean, and part of the thing that I see, the reason I'm having trouble in my head fitting it into a comfortable column or row on a matrix, is because I also see the cap, and this is a discussion we're going to have shortly, as a living document, I think you've heard me say this many times, and that I see us revisiting it fairly regularly as technology changes, as law changes and regulations and so forth, and opportunities arise. So I just want to hear you give me what your perspective is on how you see the cap fitting into what you have as a neat package, but I think it's going to be a little messier than that.
I don't disagree with that statement. I think what we've done here is tried to identify those, both quantified and unquantified measures in the cap, that identify planning and environmental review as having responsibility for implementation. For example, a VMT mitigation program, which is one of our top priorities, or will be reporting back as one of our top priorities in the cap. That will take some sort of activity, both from planning and transportation, by way of either a zoning code amendment or other similar mechanism. There are a number of measures in the cap that are specifically calling out zoning code amendments. And so we've listed them in this matrix. Obviously, it's not all-inclusive of everything in the cap. I think you're absolutely right, it needs to be a living document, and we are going to be reporting on it annually at a minimum. And we do need to have the ability to maintain some sort of flexibility for the cap to adapt over time as the state of the law, the state of technology, what we learn as we're implementing becomes real and apparent. And so just immediately, all we've done in this matrix is those measures requiring per activity, per support, and/or zoning code amendments.
Okay.
That's all in this package.
That's helpful, thank you. And for, probably for Supervisor Desmond, I'd like to recommend that, because the answer that we got on the tiny homes, I'm glad I asked the question, because I never even thought about them on an axle. So, you know, maybe sometime, you know, early part of next year, it would benefit the board to have a workshop, it doesn't have to be long and extensive, but a workshop on the status of ADUs and tiny homes, I hate the phrase, but to actually flesh out some of these ideas and get clarification. So, thank you.
On that note, I will say, we have not included in this package, this year's legislation, there are some pending bills that get at some ADU changes, so those are, we're keeping an eye on those.
Yeah, sounds like a good suggestion. Supervisor Desmond, you'll get that scheduled after the first of the year. You'll work with Flo and Ann about that, so, okay. Supervisor Frosted, Supervisor Serna.
Okay, so first, I want to thank you. We've kind of discussed some of this over time, I think, but the SPAs in relation to, the SPAs, the community plans, a lot of the SPAs, or some of the SPAs in my district are very old, and when they were created, it was difficult at best to get down to detailed solutions. So they're not really, there are, there's more work to do on the SPA before you can actually go in and tackle a large project. And Greenback Lane is one of those, where I know, just based on experience over time with conversations with the public and planning, that there's a whole lot left to do, details on the SPA. And one of my, one of my concerns, and I know you're already cognizant of it, and you're helping me with this, but I'm just saying it so the public is aware that we have a situation where the general plan, you know, over time has updated and actually overlapped some of the community plans to maybe change the outlook of, or the direction of how that community, you know, unfolds. And the community is still hanging on with the idea of a community plan from the 70s. And so my hope is that in the, in the, I know you're planning a public process, but somehow we can find a way to bring those two more close together so that the community understands where this is going, and they can even participate in how that would best, how they would best like to see that happen, so that we can include them in that process. And I also, on the ADUs, and I know I've had these, this conversation with Supervisor Desmond, and I've actually had this conversation recently with other individuals in my district, and I think we have a meeting scheduled for this. But there, from what we understand, there are other communities that are already, who already have these tiny homes, you know, on chassis versus permanent foundation that are qualifying for RENA. And so, and we're hoping, I agree with Supervisor, well, every one of the supervisors who indicated that if we could have more clarity on what ADU, what that means, and how can it, what can qualify? And I think it would be really helpful to move forward with, you know, a workshop like I think Supervisor Kennedy had suggested. But I'd be curious to know, I'm anxious to see where the state goes with this, because if they do qualify for RENA, then there might be a way to create another generation of affordable housing that can actually help us meet our goals. that can actually help us meet our goals. Thanks.
Thanks, Sue. Okay, Phil.
Thank you. So I'm going to probably ask you for the impossible here. But I think it would help inform the board, especially the closer we get to June. And that is, you noted in the presentation, Todd, the fact that Planning and Environmental Review currently has 15 vacancies. And, you know, it's been, it's been a long time since, I think, staffing has been commensurate with workload, no denying it. But it would be, it would be good to know how these priorities might otherwise shake out if we had even half of those vacancies filled, or we had the equivalent in contracted personnel assisting our planning department and Environmental Review Division. So is there a way to not overburden you and your staff to try and at least guesstimate kind of what might shift in terms of priority if we had the requisite people to do the work?
I'd say there is a way to do that. I don't know that I can provide a hard number today, but certainly this would look very differently if we were fully staffed. And that is part of the equation, I think, that we're trying to balance. I think frankly, we could move a number of these items up to a higher priority if we were, first, fully staffed, second, fully utilizing available consultant resources, which we are actively trying to engage external secret consultant assistants. That'll be coming early next year. I do think we would definitely be able to get more done if we had our vacancies filled. And let me preface all this with, this is not us coming asking for more staff. We're very grateful for the positions that were allocated last year's budget that we have not yet been able to fill because of the situation we find ourselves in. That was not my intent, but I will certainly take the opportunity to acknowledge that.
Planning Director.
That's my planning director.
To acknowledge that our staff are feeling significantly burdened by the work that, and it's not that they're complaining, it's not that they're feeling, you know, that they want to get out. It's, there's a lot of work that we're doing. There's a lot of work on our plates that we wish we could get to all of these things that really make us proud as planners, frankly. It's a challenge for sure.
I think it would be helpful, maybe, since this is a workshop today, correct?
It is.
So like, in terms of the attachment, one, the matrix, to, as a separate file altogether, make some assumptions, call it scenarios one, two, and three, right? And so, you know, the set, the first scenario might be what you have. The second scenario might be you've got seven to eight of the vacancies filled, one way or another. And the third scenario might be you're, you know, you have basically all the folks that have been budgeted for. To see what, not just how the priorities might shift, but also the dates for initiation and completion, especially of the various tasks. And if we could, if we, the board could have that, you know, at some point, it'd be helpful. But I think also it might, it could help with the, our clients, with our clients' understanding of what, why things are prioritized the way they are, and why things have the dates assigned to them the way they do, so that they have maybe a better appreciation for the fact that we're trying our best to maximize, you know, our professional staff to get this work done. But that would be helpful, at least for me, to know. I don't know how others feel. Thanks.
See some head nods. Okay, any other thoughts? I just, one, just want to bring it back to the rural commercial ag tourism. Again, that's looked to be initiated a year out. And I would just say that it's been several years, as I said a few moments ago. And, you know, I don't know how much that undertaking beyond, obviously, the community feedback that you're going to need on this. But I can just say that I know there's at least a couple of small business people that, you know, have made alternative arrangements that are, as I said, playing by the rules where others may not. And, you know, it's not, I don't think it's incumbent upon us to, you know, send code enforcement out unless obviously there's a, you know, legitimate complaint. But to try to find a way that, you know, folks can thread that needle in a meaningful way and, you know, come through for the proper permits, both planning, but also EMD and business licensing, because right now there's some, you know, hurdles that are a little difficult to overcome in some cases, so. And as I said in my briefing yesterday, some of these have state or federal requirements behind them, others have strong advocacy groups behind them. This one, you know, you just got some examples, as are some of the other ones here, where we know there was an issue, and there's probably another way to address it, or other ways of addressing it. They don't have anybody, you know, necessarily speaking in your ear or our ears on a frequent basis, saying that, you know, you need to do this because of X. It's just, it's there. So I think your list was very thoughtful, though, I'll just say that, Todd. I, you know, again, looking at being realistic, I think Supervisor Serna's question, if some things came to pass and you, you know, got a, you know, flood of, you know, new applicants, and you're able to make some choices about filling some of those vacancies, you know, how could that affect the acceleration of, you know, some of the work that's, you know, waiting in the queue here, so.
Just by way of response to a couple of things from, just feedback collectively. I do want to acknowledge Chris and Wendy had a big part in putting this matrix together. You're giving compliments to me, I need to pass them on because they had a big, big part of this. Second, I think, thinking more about the rural commercial, if that's what we're calling it, which we have.
Yeah, I'm not so sure. You might give a different connotation, but anyway.
The point is, at least in my head, connecting the dots between, I'm just thinking, reflecting on last week, you heard from the Ag Commissioner on the pretty big numbers increasing from year over year in terms of ag production. And obviously, we as planners know that the county supports agriculture. It's embedded in our general plan. And we know that the Climate Action Plan has a big role in supporting agriculture. Is there a way where we can combine those policies or direction that we know exists in a way that is beneficial to the ag community, to those folks that are trying to make ends meet and have been hit by hard times, particularly in the ag sector? And if there's a way that we can connect that to economic development with those folks, knowing that they're doing a lot of different things to support themselves, their families, and their community of like-minded individuals? That's one thing that we have not done in this matrix. We've tried to be pretty discreet, although we have checked a few, you know, a few of the columns on a number of items. But if we apply different lenses to some of these things, whether it's, you know, from an ag or climate perspective, or even an environmental justice perspective, that might be another way to look at things. But ultimately, it comes back to, I think Supervisor Serna, your point about, what could we do if we had all of our positions filled and fully utilize our resources?
You know, one other thing I just want to point out, and again, it's not on the list, and it probably falls into code enforcement realm, but something this board spent a good deal of time on, trying to grapple with Airbnbs, but then, you know, how those are regulated. And believe it or not, starting to get any number of complaints, not in large volumes, of the Airbnb approach, I won't say this always Airbnb as the, as the name would imply, but where they're renting out rural properties, having large events, which are encroaching on neighboring, not just ag properties, but people's residences, you know, get togethers that go all night long, and then people, you know, they're even less oriented in, you know, situations where they want on people's property. The sheriff is called, they go out there to enforce anything that may have some immediacy to it as it relates to the law. But I do think it's an area that, and I know we have some regulations that pertain to it, and we were looking at more in the suburban, you know, metropolitan setting. It's becoming problematic. And I know, you know, certainly if you have Mr. Chamberlain here, he's filled us some complaints from, you know, constituents in District Five. I don't know if in some of the other outlying areas of the county where you're experiencing that. But, you know, people are taking the opportunity to have that rural setting and have large gatherings, and, you know, and we have, you know, pretty thin police response, very little of any code response unless we've had planned, you know, on weekends. So people know that, they know that at five o'clock, unless we've, you know, got some enforcement activity going on. And so I, again, it's not just so much a planning item, but Anne, I would just call your attention because I can just tell you that it's becoming a bit more problematic. Certainly, the event centers that people have to complement their wineries and so forth. Most people are pretty good about hearing to that, but I think there's some stretching of the rules as it relates to that as well. But certainly the rental of properties out for, in, I got a constituent complaint here just a couple of weeks ago, a few days ago, that listed four or five properties in the Wilton-Herald area where there seems to be some regularity of, you know, of that type of use. We'll turn it over to code enforcement, they'll do, you know, do their follow-on. But I would just suggest too, that as we're looking at tourism and certainly kind of building off what you said, that, you know, it might be time to take a look at that and maybe it gets more comprehensive and therefore more time-consuming. But I think it's good to look at it kind of through different lenses rather than just discreetly because there might be some ties here that allow you to do some of that work, Todd. That's good thoughts, so. Okay, any other comments by board members at this juncture?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Sue. All right, do we have any members of the public? Okay.
We do not have any callers.
All right. Any final part of comments?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I just want to throw it back at Todd. Did you get what you needed? I mean, is this helpful?
Yes or no?
That's what I thought.
Move everything up to year one.
That's why I asked the question.
I think, I mean, obviously, we heard all the comments that you had. I think it is incumbent on us to go back and kind of.
Try to figure out what we meant?
Figure out what you meant. And frankly, look at whether this results in any changes to the matrix to move a few items up or down. And then we can report back either through the county exec or other mechanisms as needed.
Thank you.
You know, if I could offer a suggestion, just on that count, I think that maybe having some annual review of where you are. I mean, you know, I think members have talked about, certainly in the budgetary cycle, and if you fill positions. But this is the first time that I can recall that in any comprehensive fashion, again, kudos to all that put it together, I don't think it'd be a bad idea. I mean, you can have, you know, discreet workshops on tiny homes, or talk about, you know, positions that are filled that allow you to, you know, to encompass more of the work effort. But I, you know, I think somewhere along the line, you know, it might be good to touch base with your board to, you know, track the progress. And you're going to see items as they come forward. But some of these are going to be in the works, and you're going to, you know, and some are multi-year efforts. I guess I would just offer that, you know, I guess it's easy for me to say, but maybe on an annual basis that you have some, you know, have a workshop. This didn't go that long this afternoon, it took some work to put this together. But I think, once you've got a document, you're working off of it, that's a good basis and foundation for having discussion on an annual basis, Todd. So I don't know, you know, how you might structure that.
We don't disagree with that. In fact, we're recommending that we do this on an annual basis.
You just want to come back and have something to say about it.
Okay, anyway.
Just to, real briefly on that, we have talked about doing it in the context of, that annual report back, in the context of our general planning report as one kind of milestone that already exists. We're coming back every March, reporting on our general plan. This might be another thing to add to that.
Maybe have it on the March timeframe?
Obviously, March is, we're not going to get a lot done.
Between now and March 23, okay. All right, well, thank you again to our planning staff. That was an information workshop item. And I trust folks will hear more about the progress on a number of fronts, so. Okay, with that, we're going to go to the next item, item 47.
Okay, item 47, introduce an ordinance adding a new chapter 2.17 and amending various sections of the Sacramento County Code related to creation of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing. Waive full reading and continue to December 6 for adoption. Delegate contract authority to the Director of Homeless Services and Housing. Authorize the Department of Personnel Services to process an administrative salary resolution amendment. Resolution amendment, amend the Conflict of Interest Code and approve appropriation adjustment request 2023-2005.
Okay, Ms. Katalari, there's, how could you bring us?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Board. Shivana Kattari, Deputy County Executive for Social Services. So I am here today to present a number of items that Flo just read into the record. A little bit of background, as you know and are fully aware, homelessness is one of the biggest issues facing Sacramento County at this time. And over the recent years, this board has made significant investments into homeless efforts in order to mitigate for those unhoused, but also for the community at large so we can begin to address concerns. Despite these efforts, homelessness is on the rise. And our last point in time count in 2022 indicated that we've seen a 67% increase in homelessness since 2019, with 72% of those individuals who are homeless living unsheltered. In addition, two surveys of community needs and budget priorities that was commissioned by the county in 2021 found that respondents identified homelessness as the top concern they wanted the county to address. And in light of the growing homeless issues and community concerns, staff are currently recommending changes to our organizational structure of the county homeless services to ensure effective oversight, accountability, and coordination on this very important topic. And I don't know if we have our PowerPoint up. I will, okay, great, thank you. So as I, as I mentioned, the need from the point in time count, what this translates into is that currently we have 9,278 individuals sleeping unsheltered. The county has made some significant investments into some strategies over the past few years, as I've mentioned, multidisciplinary encampment services teams, $94.5 million in American Rescue Plan Act allocation to housing and homelessness, our landlord engagement and assistance program, you invested $10 million in, will go live in January. And then your commitment to safe stay communities, of which you'll be hearing about one more today, is the next item. The need for dedicated department to focus on this critical issue with the infrastructure and the staff to coordinate response, stand up new programs, and pursue new funding opportunities is what we will be discussing today.
Shivana, before you leave that, what do we spend annually? Is the number, I thought, like $180 million? What is the number that we spend all told on homeless programs?
Yeah, so I won't get into the weeds right now on that number. What I will say is that $180 million that we represented, and I think there might be something on the website, I'll ask Emily to answer that in a minute, really comprises a combination of things. It comprises some of the one-time investments into ARPA.
So that's not an annualized amount, that was a point in time?
That was a point in time amount, yeah. So some of them are ARPA investments, and then some of them will be ongoing investments or have been, and they span across multiple departments. And so Department of Human Assistance, for instance, Department of Health Services.
Yeah.
Well, and some of the ARPA money, although it is one-time money, it's over multiple years. So some of those one-time funds are actually annual expenditures, not all of them, but some of them.
So is it number 180, is it 150, 120, if you normalized it without ARPA?
It's really, we'd have to, we're working on that right now because a lot of people are asking that same question. And I know that Ms. Thomas and her team are working on that with Emily. But that number includes, the $180 million number includes what Waste Management is spending on cleaning up, and what Transportation is spending on encampments, and what the Health Department is spending on water and sanitation, and public health nurses, and what we're spending on behavioral health for those who are homeless. So it's a, it's a puzzle that you have to put together because there's so many different funding sources, and it resides in multiple departments.
Okay, but we have quoted a number that was on, I think it went out in the county newsletter, if I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong about that. But, and I quoted a number that was a little less than the 180. But again, I don't want to be inaccurate if I'm saying that. So if, you know, and I said it was over multiple departments and disciplines, and it wasn't all related just to direct services, that there were a lot of things involved. But I think, you know, again, and it may fluctuate, but I think it's important to have that number so that, whether it's we as supervisors, you as a county executive, you Shivana, or other, you know, Emily, whoever it is, if we're quoting the number, and again, recognize there might be upticks because you've received infusion of federal dollars or state dollars, HAP funds that, you know, and some of that's been sequestered now and so forth. But it's, I think it's important that we have a kind of the baseline amount. And I don't want to be inaccurate when I'm quoting it, and I don't think others do as well. And I trust there's fluctuation, but we got to. well. And I trust there's fluctuation, but we got to, as soon as we can, at least get a good idea what that number is. And just because you were quoting, I saw this particular, you know, slide you had, I thought it was important to ask you that question. So.
And I don't think you were not stating a truthful comment when you said that number. At that moment, that is what it was to the best of our ability and we're relooking at it. So we're always relooking at it.
Okay. That helps. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. And I will say, one of the reasons we're recommending some of these actions today is we recognize a lot of our efforts do span across multiple departments and there really hasn't been a way to coordinate that and pull that together. We haven't had sufficient staffing or resources to do that previously. So this, this effort that I'm presenting today will absolutely get us further to having, having those accurate metrics and data to be able to track. So today, our recommended actions is to, are to introduce an ordinance creating the Department of Homeless Services and Housing. Authorize administrative salary resolution amendment, creating five new full-time equivalent positions, and establish the new Director of Homeless Services and Housing class, and reallocate existing positions to appropriate class or permanent status. Our next recommendation is to appoint Emily Halken, Director of Homeless Services and Housing, to delegate contract authority to the Director of Homeless Services and Housing, and to approve appropriation adjustment request, which is attached to your board item. In terms of overall impacts, the additional costs that we anticipate for fiscal year 22, 23 would be an additional $735,000, which would be a cost increase due to partial year cost of new positions, additional space, equipment, and business expenses. This would be funded with the county general fund contingency that the board set aside during the adoption of the 2022, 23 budget. For fiscal year 23, 24, we anticipate 1.2 to 1.5 million in ongoing general fund cost increases due to a full year cost of new positions, anticipated facility costs for a new office space for the, for the department, and as well as business expenses associated with setting up a new department. And then we also anticipate some one-time tenant improvement and furniture costs will be included in a future recommendation once we identify a facility for this new department to locate. In terms of personnel, we will start with 26 full-time equivalent positions that will shift to the Department of Homeless Services and Housing. Six of these full-time positions already exist within the homeless initiatives office, which you have already approved. Four of these would be new management and administrative support positions to support the creation of a new department. And 16 of these positions would be moving over from the Department of Human Assistance homeless services positions. And then we are also requesting a one full-time Office of Public Information dedicated staff person as we recognize the need to really focus on making sure we're getting the words out there about what we're doing surrounding homelessness. In terms of expected outcomes, I just want to be clear that it's really not our intent to duplicate efforts of our partners. We recognize our partners, whether it be cities, whether it be the continuum of care or SSF, really do need to come together and continue to coordinate these services. So we're not looking to duplicate efforts or take over anything that others are doing. It's also not our intent to minimize the work that our various departments in the county have done to date. Department of Human Assistance, Department of Health Services, Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services have really done a lot of work in this space and we want to honor that work and we want to bring it forward and coordinate it more. So we are working with each of those directors and departments to make sure that whatever moves into this new department is done so thoughtfully. And there will likely be a phase two where some things will continue to live in those other departments because it makes sense to do that. So for instance, behavioral health workers may continue to live in the Department of Health Services to leverage Medi-Cal dollars. But we are doing that thoughtfully and we will do that in phases. Instead, it's our intent to improve cross-system coordination with multiple county and city departments, community-based providers, and interested stakeholders, and constituency groups. We're intending to decrease fragmentation and confusion by creating a single point of contact for our county-related homeless services and initiatives. We're intending to increase opportunities to leverage other funding resources and expand new programs. And we want to enhance our tracking and evaluation of program outcomes, including our fiscal outcomes, and guide strategic investments so we can improve transparency and accountability.
Shivon, if you could pause for a moment. We have a couple supervisors, please.
Sure.
Phil and Patrick.
Great. Thank you. So in terms of the, what you just mentioned, Shivon, in terms of the, the cross-coordination between different departments, is there any expectation that we would have, at least programmatically, if not literally physically housed under the rubric of the new agency? Does it make sense to have someone from regional parks involved? Because I think you could make an argument pretty easily that the one county asset that is currently, and unfortunately, home to probably the largest single collection of those that are suffering homelessness is obviously the American River Parkway. And of course, our ranger force and our parks department personnel currently are grappling with the impacts of folks habitating on the Parkway. So something to think about, you know. I know that there's a very obvious and necessary focus on the, the obvious agencies that would be involved based on the fact that this is a social and public health issue. But it seems to me that given our, our history and what we understand about the Parkway and, and again, its unfortunate use as a, as a place to live for so many right now, it might be at least worth, you know, having a discussion amongst yourselves about how that might look and work.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll continue to look at that. I will say that I just mentioned a handful of departments, but I do want to be clear and lift up that a lot of departments in the county are involved already in some way and meet on a weekly basis to coordinate response. We will continue to look at what makes sense to fit in the department. But nonetheless, we think this new model of a department will allow us to better coordinate with those departments regardless of if they sit inside or right outside the department. We have to work together. Thanks.
Patrick.
I guess some, that's, your answer was one of the places I was going. And this isn't the, we're not silowing off homeless services in this department. We're still going to matrix where necessary with, I mean, for example, a good one, you know, that Supervisor Serna said, and also like animal control and so forth and so on. So we don't want the public to look at this and think this is it, you know?
Yes. I can't think of a department that doesn't touch this issue right now, to be honest. Yeah.
Exactly. And maybe this is, I don't know if this is the right place to, to, to talk about this, but it's because your previous slide where it talked about positions and so forth. And by the way, if you need to hire, I understand there, there's a lot of people in planning looking, would be in the, we've talked about it a lot up here from the dais and, and you all have, you know, you understand and recognize the, the need because this is such a big issue, an all-consuming issue to, for so many of us, that it may be something to consider is to have someone dedicated to this department in community outreach and public information, you know, rather than just matrixing out. Or maybe you're already there.
There is a, a public information officer included in the increased positions that is fully dedicated to, they'll still work for Kim Nava, but be 100% dedicated to homelessness in this department.
Okay, good. That's, thank you very much.
Okay. See what it does.
Great. Thank you, Shivon. This is, this is wonderful, the work, your work and staff work putting this together to improve the coordination. This is a crisis that is inherently challenging to coordinate because it's so multidisciplinary. And I, great suggestion by Supervisor Serna, couldn't agree more in terms of ensuring that we don't forget about some of these other elements or other county departments that are obviously highly affected by this and make sure there's ongoing coordination with them, even though they're not going to be part of the new DHSH. And in terms of the behavioral health, and again, kind of getting to what Supervisor Kennedy was mentioning, I certainly don't want the public to get the impression that this is the be-all, end-all. I mean, obviously, our, our behavioral health efforts are a huge part of our homelessness response. Can you talk a little bit about how this new department will interface with behavioral health?
Sure. So, thank you. So as you know, the board invested in creating a homeless engagement and response team through behavioral health. And that is 14 individuals who are hired to go out into the field in addition to some folks to coordinate that. And these folks who are going to be out in the field will be going out with our multidisciplinary encampment teams throughout the counties and within the city jurisdiction as well, in order to assess and enroll people into services. So that's one aspect of what we're going to do that we haven't done previously in the county is really gotten behavioral health folks out into the field, working deeply in encampments in a multidisciplinary way. The new department will coordinate those efforts in terms of what encampments they're going to, how do they interface with other multidisciplinary team members and partners. But those individuals will still report to behavioral health and that allows them to continue to pull down as much federal funding through Medi-Cal billing as we can possibly do for that team. In addition, as you may know, the Department of Health Services and Behavioral Health has gone through some adult system transformation recently and has as a result, set up these 10 new core centers. And these core centers, Centers for Opportunity, really are places where folks with behavioral health needs can interface in the community, really walk in for services. They're like wellness centers where one can walk in and be assessed for services and linked smoothly into services. So in addition to having folks out in encampments, we're opening and having more front doors into services. And I think previously, you know, that was something that I think the county was criticized on, that it was just too hard to get into that front door. And we really took that to heart and really changed the way that we're interfacing with the community to have multiple front doors so that we don't have wrong doors. So those are just two things within behavioral health, but there's a lot of other initiatives that we could talk about now or at a different time where we are really trying to create those multiple touchpoints in the community.
Great. Now, I appreciate that. I think it's, I mean, in most of our discussions with the city, you know, it centers around providing those behavioral health supports in terms of addressing the homelessness crisis. So I'm glad you took the opportunity to expand on those programs a little bit. So I appreciate that. And the other thing, I was, I was looking, just sitting here online, looking at the county's website on homelessness response and our local homelessness action plan. It didn't, I thought we incorporated a behavioral health aspect to it, if I'm not mistaken. I'm looking at you, Anne, but it's not, it's not, it's not in this version that's on the website. I know Lisa Bates is up there as well. Isn't that accurate?
Number six?
Yes. We did, didn't we? Okay. All right. So it's just not updated. I noticed that on there because that is something that people, when they don't, when they don't see the behavioral health aspect in our, in our homelessness response plan, I mean, people certainly take notice. We all take notice of it because we know we're already doing so much work in that space to serve, you know, the unhoused community. So just, just notice that as I was looking at this.
We will update that. When the board initially approved it, we hadn't included that as a recommendation. And then with the city and the COC, we did go back to include it and that's what was submitted to the state. So we will make sure that gets updated. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Shivon.
I had a question on the, the funding for it. So will, you talked about how it'll be funded for the remaining portion of this fiscal year and with the ongoing general fund cost increase. But then what is the total cost? Because some of these positions are coming over from, I assume, positions that may be funded through other sources. Could be wrong about that. So what do, what do we envision with the construct that you've presented here, assuming you have all these positions funded and hopefully filled. But what is the new department? Again, it's not all new funding, but, and it's not all general fund either, I presume, if you're having folks come over from, from Health Services, or maybe they are, all are.
Correct. Yeah. No, and I will ask Amanda Thomas, our CFO, if she can join me here. I will say that the, the item, when I presented this, the 1.2 to 1.5, that's the increased cost associated, right?
I noted that, yeah.
So I'll ask if she has a total cost in front of her that she can share with you. And you're right, it's, it's not just general fund, but it's a combination of funding sources, HAP dollars, ARPA dollars, those types of things.
And maybe just, well, Amanda's going to present, but if there are HAP dollars and those HAP dollars either go away or reduce, you know, we're building a department that, you know, again, it'll be for future discussion, I guess, but whether those that are supplemented by general fund dollars or some other realignment source. So I'm curious though, with the, what's the total funding outlook here?
Sure. So Amanda Thomas, Chief Fiscal Officer. So I, just to sort of reiterate what Shivon said, I think, I think the intent behind this item was to, to sort of talk about what the net increase in cost might be. So I'm not, I'm not 100% prepared to talk about the, the total cost. I can't say it's a one, it's that sort of 1.2 to 1.5 million dollar increase in general fund contribution. In addition to that, I think it's important to note that I believe there are 16 positions that would be moving over from DHA to this new department, in addition to the new positions that are being added and those that would be, that are already existing within the Office of Homeless Initiatives. And of those 16, about half of them are currently funded with ARPA. And there's about 1.1 million ARPA contribution going to those, towards those positions, which are recommended as part of this action today to be converted from limited term to permanent, recognizing that those, those positions, you know, are critical to the ongoing success of this department. That's about 1.1 million in annual ARPA funding that, you know, come the end of 2026, if, if there's not other funding identified, that would also become general fund contribution. So I think that sort of gives you a sense of the, the potential net general fund impact of these, the staffing recommendations, the 1.1 million and the roughly one and a half million.
So 2.6 million?
Right. And what, I think what I'm not addressing there are the, the other DHA positions that would be, would be moving over as a result of this.
Well, they'll still be funded by DHA?
They, I think the assumption is they would continue to be funded as they currently are, which I, I believe is a mix of funding sources, but probably primarily general fund.
But the funding will come with the positions, the DHA positions.
Exactly.
No, I follow that. I just, again, I'll tell you the general fund ongoing cost potential here. So you're somewhere between 2.6 and maybe even a bit more if you're looking at, I guess you've already built in facility costs and business expenses?
So facility costs are included in that one and a half million roughly number in terms of the additional costs.
And the one and a half includes the new PIO outreach position too?
Correct.
Okay. So from what you, from what you could tell me today is 2.6 million. If we got to year 2026, assuming everything else is static, those would be the, the ongoing general fund costs. I just, I want to go to the eyes open. Again, I know, I'm not objecting, but I just think it's important to, to know that because again, you know, we get reminded of that often and, and it's an important notation, I think, as we make, you know, make this decision here today. So, okay. That's all I had on that. Anybody else? All right. No other speakers. Shivon, anything else? And we kind of caught you at the tail end of your presentation.
No, I just wanted to thank Emily and Ethan Die, our Director of Human Assistance, Amanda Thomas, and Jeff King, who we brought back as a retired annuitant to help us pull this all together. So the team's been working really diligently. I wanted to thank them for all their work.
Great. Thanks, Shivon. Yep. Hello to Jeff. I saw him yesterday upstairs. All right. Then unless there's any other questions, Shivon, do we have, I have no one signed to speak. It's light this afternoon, but is there anybody on the telephone?
We do not have any callers.
Okay. Supervisor Serna.
I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Okay. It's moving second to prove the recommendation is outlined. And if there's no further questions, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Next item, please.
Okay. Item 48, review and provide input into conceptual design and operational approach for the Watt Safe Stay Community. Approve funding from the American Rescue Plan Act for the Department of General Services in the amount of 17 million for improvements to 4837 Watt Avenue to operate as a safe-stay community.
Okay. Mr. Gasaway, good afternoon, Jeff.
Good afternoon. Chairman of tolling members of the board, Jeff Gasaway, Director of General Services. Here to talk to you today about the Watt Avenue Safe Stay Community. If you could bring up the presentation, please. So we're here to talk to you about the, the conceptual design for the Watt Avenue Safe Stay Community. As you're aware, the board approved the purchase and sale As you're aware, the board approved the purchase and sale agreement on October 25th. That agreement's been executed, and we're hoping to close the purchase within the next month. We're also in the process of securing a contract with the design, local design firm, to help us with the design of the facility. We've got about $7 million for construction, $17 million for construction. Actual cost for construction will be determined through the design process and the public bidding process. As you are, the site is at 4837 Watt Avenue between Wynown Way and Myrtle Avenue. Here are some photos of the site. It's actually, they actually painted the exterior, the interior, and cleaned up a lot on the inside of the facility since we toured it last. So, it looks very nice. As far as the initial conceptual design, we're looking at potentially 140 indoor sleeping cabins. 120 of those would be singles, 20 would be double units, 50 outdoor safe take parking sites. And that would be for vehicles for guests staying in the sleeping cabins or potential RV sites as well. The indoor would have a plumbed restroom and showers, office for meeting space, indoor/outdoor gathering access, and onsite storage for personal property.
Okay. If you could pause for a second. Jeff, we have a couple supervisors, Phil and then Patrick.
Thank you. I don't think we had an advanced copy of the presentation, correct?
Probably not.
Okay. So, I don't know if, I don't know if the next slide is going to be a continuation of the last slide. But in the event that it's not, wanted to just make mention the fact that there will be some program space for pets, correct?
Yes, there are, there will be some program space for pets. Exactly, yes.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure those that might be watching understand that we're certainly not leaving the pets out.
No. It's going to be modeled after some of the other, the Safe Stay communities that we're currently working on. So, yeah, there will be pets. So, I'm going to turn it over to Emily to talk about the initial program.
Just before you go, Patrick.
Yeah, just, just a couple of questions. Now, this, the, the name of this is Initial Design Concepts, so things will change. This, though, does have the potential to go beyond this 140 indoor sleeping and 50 outdoor. I mean, particularly the outdoor, I thought we were talking about significantly more than that for the parking spots.
So, the parking spots, you know, we've looked at it, and conceptually, there could be up to 50 parking spots with power, water, and sewer potentially, and then additional parking for vehicles.
Okay.
And, and we won't really know until we get the provider and our design consultant in a room to see what, you know, we can look at maybe a phased approach, so we can open things sooner than later, and just kind of look at it overall. I know we're looking at potentially having kitchen facilities there, whether it's a full-blown kitchen or cook chill. So, there's, there's a lot of opportunities with this blank canvas of a facility, so.
Okay. So, so not just, not to harp on the outdoor parking, but that is something that, you know, we're doing all the tiny homes, but that is something we have not accommodated for up until now. So, this is new territory for us and necessary, as we all see in the neighborhoods. So, I guess the answer is, is that, so, so the, the, those that can be plumbed and so forth, those would be for like RVs, but we're still looking at having space potentially. I know that, you know, we have to go to the community and have those discussions, but potentially also for cars and so forth. So, it could go beyond that.
Correct. Yes. It can go beyond that. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Jeff. Emily?
Forgot Anne.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Anne, sorry. Just punched up. But Anne.
Before Emily starts, normally when we make a department head appointment, we acknowledge, and we just did that for Emily. So, I would just like, I mean, I know she's, but it's new, it's different. So, I wanted to say congratulations to Emily. She's done a great job in this position, and I have confidence she will continue to do a good job.
We're just not skipping a beat, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I think she's going to be the best we've ever had.
What? Thanks, Sutton Bar. I do appreciate, I mean, going back to that, I do appreciate your confidence in me. And I do want to express my appreciation, not just to you and Anne and Siobhan, but also to Ethan and his team. And I'm inheriting something which is so much heart and passion that his team has brought to it, and I'm so lucky to be able to learn from them. And so, definitely want to recognize how much I'm leaning on him and his team to, to continue the good work they've done. So, thank you. So, Emily, how can your Director of Office of Homeless Initiative, or, sorry, Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing? And just to add on a couple of things specifically to parking, because this is a new venture, something we're really excited about. We know that this is a big need in the community. One of the things we're hoping that this facility will allow us to do is to facilitate people's movement out of vehicles. Vehicles are not an appropriate place to live in. And so, for the first time, we'll be able to say, hey, you can come inside and sleep in one of the sleeping cabins, and your vehicle can safely be stored onsite. We know there are some people who that transition will take time, and so being able to provide those spaces. But our goal will always be that people don't, their vehicle does not become their, their, their permanent housing option. So, adding on to what Jeff said about program concepts, like with our other Safe Stay communities, we are maintaining the commitments we've made throughout this process, that there will be a 24/7 onsite operator. I'm pleased to let you know that we have had sort of initial agreement from CityNet, who is the operator for the two in the south area, that they will, they are interested in and likely willing to take on this property as well. We have to get a formalized agreement. But we really think that having them manage this and be sort of the operator choice for these types of programs will create efficiencies and consistencies throughout. And they'll really be able to create and build an administrative infrastructure that will bring strength to this program here in Sacramento. So, we will have onsite 24/7 operator in addition to onsite 24/7 security. And as with other sites, those security patrols will not just be maintain the security inside the fence, but outside as well, and will be available to the community at large, working with P-Bid security in the neighborhood, working with other community partners. As with all of them, again, we will have a good neighbor commitment. It will be memorialized in some sort of documentation and regularly reviewed and updated. And it'll be a document to hold ourselves, our operator, and the community accountable for all our mutual agreements here. While the Safe Stay provides lots of services and the intent is to create a safety, we always want it to be a pathway into housing. So, we will ensure that the operator's primary focus is into exiting into housing or whatever appropriate next service for the clients, bringing strong linkages to behavioral health, primary health, and other supportive services in the community. As with all the Safe Stays as well, we have committed to this community and will maintain that commitment. The camps in the immediate priority, in the immediate proximity to the Safe Stay will be prioritized. It does not mean that it's exclusive and that we won't be able to serve people throughout the community, but any encampments immediately adjacent will be the first priority, including those vehicles. And, and as you are well aware, there's quite a lot of vehicle camping currently on Roseville Road, which is very, very proximate, as well as in the McCollum Business Park. And as with all the Safe Stays, it will not be a walk-up. It will be a managed entry and exit for all guests and minimizing impact on the broader community. So, as Jeff sort of alluded to at the front end, our next steps is that from my office, we are continuing engagement with the community and other stakeholders. We've had some really positive community meetings with all of you in attendance. Appreciate that. And looking forward to incorporating the operator into some of those community conversations. I imagine, like with the other Safe Stays, we will form a formalized community council, probably closer to the time of opening. But there's lots of community partners that we need to keep engaged in this process from the design until operations. As Jeff said, his staff are working to secure a design firm, and we will sit down together and scope this one together and have an ongoing conversation during the design, construction, and ultimately operations. I'm sure between both of us, we'll be returning to the board multiple times to provide you updates on the project and certainly seek unnecessary approvals for funding or for other, other approvals you need to make. And from my end, once we have the operator completely onboard and we've scoped it out, we will be coming back to you with more detail on the cost for the programmatic end. With that, I think that ends my and Jeff comments, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Emily. Congratulations to you once again. And we have Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Serna.
Yes, Emily, congratulations. So, thank you so much for this and, and for all your work. I mean, you know how I feel about you and your staff, the work you're doing. It is, it's just, it's wonderful. And I, and I just am so thankful that you are willing to, you know, take the time to work with me and my staff and listen to, you know, our concerns and suggestions. And I know you incorporated a lot of those into the first model of the, of the, of the Safe Stay communities that this board approved and bringing those to this effort as well. So, I just wanted to start out by thanking you for that. And certainly, I want to also thank my, my colleagues, Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Frost. You know, we did a community meeting in North Highlands, what was that, a couple weeks ago now or so? Where, I think it was a very good meeting, and it was a very, I mean, I think we heard very loud and clear from that community that they, you know, it was, to me, what a big takeaway for me is that they all acknowledged that, look, we know you're trying. We know you need to do something. And we understand that. We think this is a good idea, but they're understandably concerned, right, about the impact in the community and the, you know, what appears to be a disproportionate amount of services being, being placed in those communities. And so, I think in, in terms of the slide before this one, where you talked about, you know, a few of the elements, I'd like to just have you maybe expand a little bit on the, and I don't know if this would be part of the good neighbor commitment, but, but something you and I have discussed, Emily, is I guess either a contract that guests would have to sign in terms of kind of their own behavior. Can you talk a little bit about, about that, both in terms of what will be expected of folks inside and outside the facility?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Yeah, certainly, all of our shelter operators and CityNet is amongst them, do require certain behaviors in guests. You're living in a community, and you have to be a good neighbor, not just to the folks within the Safe Stay community, but outside. And so, there are requirements of, of the guests. Typically, that is a documented agreement. And typically, you know, folks are provided opportunities to correct behavior first. You know, it's not an immediate kick out, but there are consequences. If after a few times, you've not made the corrective changes that you need to, you're asked to leave. You're always invited back if you're able to maintain, you know, your, your sense of community and ability to be a good neighbor. In addition, outside to the, to the neighborhood, there will be a commitment more at the provider-county level of how we're going to interact with the community, how if somebody does go outside and is behaving erratically or causing a disruption, that the provider will be the first contact and will be able to go out and intervene, that we will do a perimeter, sort of continual perimeter search around debris in any encampment buildup. So, there would be a 24/7 posted number for the community if there's ever concerns or questions, that there would be a place for community to air their concerns and grievances and meet and engage with the provider. So, those are the types of things we typically see. And it's, and it's on my department's job to hold our provider accountable. So, there's multiple layers, sorry, of oversight.
Okay. I, thank you very much. I appreciate. I think it's important. You know, we said at the community meeting, we said it, Supervisor Serna and I had other community meetings, and we'll, and we'll have to continue to relay that information and reinforce that to the community. And, and there's no, I mean, it seems to me, there's no aspect of this operation or any of the Safe Stay communities that we aren't always going to be willing to, we'll revisit. We will, we will tweak it. We will make changes to both be, improve our efficiency and our success for the clients we serve, but as well as the surrounding neighborhood. I mean, would you agree with that, Emily? I mean?
Yeah, I mean, definitely. And with the creation of the department, one of the great things is not only are we going to have a much more public-facing accountability, but I'm going to have dedicated staff to do those types of deep dives, so that we're not reactive, we're proactive with our partners. So, we're going to be able to look at on a monthly basis, all of our programs, how they're performing, where there might be gaps or challenges or needs or additional funding, and that we're going to be able to share that on an ongoing basis. But yes, all of our programs are iterated. This is a challenging, complex issue, and it's not one size fits all. So, if we find that something's not working, it's our responsibility to, to correct that 100%.
And that's why the, the community councils are, you know, so, obviously so important. Well, I think, you know, I, I think about this all the time, like all my colleagues do, including in the middle of the night. And, and I think that this model that we're creating is because of, you know, your work and the work of your staff is you're creating programs, facilities, conditions that are most likely to attract folks in and take advantages of the services we're offering to be able to change their lives, while at the same time allowing us to focus on communities that are being, you know, harmed by some of these encampments. And I, I just, I'm, I'm obviously highly supportive of this. I think the, the numbers you talked about in here, I know, you know, we'll start and show proof of concept that we can do this the right way. And I do agree. I think there, there will be opportunities potentially to expand the size of this location. But thank you again, and certainly I will be supporting this matter today, as you know. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you. Yeah. Congratulations, Emily. So, one of the bullet points on your program concepts slide said linkages to behavioral health and primary health. Does it make sense, and I guess this is more directed at Jeff, but does it make sense to have early conversations with Elica before we even set free architects and others that will give us something to think about in terms of how the TIs are completed? Because we do have that east-facing connection with, with a health clinic, or at least we think we do. And I just wanted to kind of bring it up, because it seems like if we don't think about it in this list at this time, it becomes an afterthought real quick. And I don't think it should be an afterthought.
I think that's a great question. And I think that we'll introduce that to our team, to have them reach out and work with Emily's group to reach out to be able to get, get input from them.
And I can say that I've already reached out. I know that Supervisor Desmond spoke with him. And I've reached out with Tim Lutz, the new Director of Health Services, to the CEO of Elica, and looking to arrange a conversation with her sooner rather than later. But I agree that the design, as well as the program operations, hopefully they can be a great partner.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Emily or Jeff? I'm seeing in the queue at the board. Do we have any public commentary?
We do not. Congratulations, Emily.
Okay. So, with that, then we have some recommendations.
I'll move approval of the staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, it's moving second to approve the staff recommendation, including the conceptual design information and the 17 million ARPA allocation for the construction, initial operations. Before we vote, so how much initial operations is covered in the 17 million? Two years?
That's just construction, I think.
That's not what it says here.
The 17 million is just the capital cost. We'll be coming back later with the program operations, once we have the operator onboard and have scoped out the site.
Okay. So, the recommended action is not for initial operations?
It's for, it's for capital. The 17 million, are we going to?
I know. I'm just, but I'm reading from the staff report, because it says funding for construction, initial operations. So, we're only approving for the capital construction, not for initial operations, correct?
That's correct.
It says, "Review and provide input into conceptual design and operational approach." It's no funding attached to that.
No. Read number two, Anne.
Oh.
It does.
It does say initial operations.
It does.
Yeah. Well, we'll have to adjust the reso and.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask next, the resolution, because it says initial operations and that as well. And, and, okay. So, we're just approving capital.
Editing went into this board letter, and I noticed that this morning when I got back to the office from vacation. And I was like, oh, we missed that. So, yeah, we'll, we'll adjust the reso and get it to flow.
Okay. All right. So, we are funding capital construction with $17 million. Resolution will reflect that. So, that is the motion, correct? Okay. All right. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. We have to do our nominations, and then we'll come back to the long-awaited video, or shortly-awaited video.
Item, item 49 are your nominations. You're continuing to December 6th Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Sacramento County Youth Commission, and your first item is Sacramento Environmental Commission.
Okay. Chief Staff recommended continue that to December the 6th. So, hold that over.
I think that concludes your nominations.
All right. So, then let's go to the follow-on. Thanks for getting it together, Anne, the video, the SHRA, to see the projects.
Yeah. So, I'm going to ask Metro Cable to go ahead and play that video.
All right. Then we'll come back to comments before we close.
Pardon?
I said then we'll come back to comments once we, yeah. I said then we'll come back to comments.
Yeah.
Some catchy music, we can make that the board supervisor's theme song. Start ringing. All right. Very good. Thank you for that. So then we'll go back to our county executive comments, Anne.
Just want to take a brief moment to mention item number 32, which was a resolution recognizing Sandy Damiano on the occasion of her retirement. She did not want to be here today, but that's Sandy, but I just want to publicly say, you know, she has provided dedicated service to the county of Sacramento for a long time, served in multiple positions, and most recently delayed her retirement in order to help us out by being the interim director for the Department of Health Services, and she is retiring, I think it's December 2nd or 3rd, I mean, very, very soon, but really just want to thank her for her many years of excellent service, and for all the good work that she has done.
We have a nicely framed resolution with five I-votes on it for her, so we'll get it to her as we can, but yes, thanks to Sandy for her years of service to this county and this people. Okay, Anne, anything else? Okay, all right, board members. Okay, I just had one item, and I mentioned this in briefing yesterday, and I don't know if he, folks have touched base with other members of the board, but I did have a conversation with Jeff Durn from Pride Industries regarding a couple of initiatives that are going on elsewhere in the state, and thought, at least for a point of reference, it'd be good for this county to consider. One is a program that's recently been launched in San Diego County, and known as Jay's Program, where one of the supervisors there introduced ordinance and legislation to actually develop, and working with community partners, an inclusive employment program at the county of San Diego, working with people with intellectual disabilities, and integrating them into the workforce. It would seem to me that certainly, in a time when we are seeking to fill many different positions, assuming folks can meet the qualifications, that we ought to consider that, and we have a provider right here in this community that I think would be a good source for, you know, a pool of folks that could be a part of the county workforce, so I think there's more information available, and certainly looking forward to that to you, Anne, to look at, and I trust other members of the board may be familiar with that. The other piece of information that came to me, and I did mention to him, I would introduce at least for thought and consideration, is apparently in Los Angeles County, that there's a requirement for social enterprise contracting ordinance, which, not unlike what we do with small businesses, with women and disabled business enterprises, minority business ownership, there's a certain amount of consideration given in the process of seeking either goods and services, and it's, you know, under the guise of inclusiveness and economic development, and their social enterprise will include folks who obviously work to employ folks that, you know, have intellectual disabilities, but are, again, make that a part of their overall business approach and their workforce development. And so, again, there's a, I say not as a model, as much as there's at least a example of an ordinance, and I'll make sure, Anne, if it says it's been forwarded to you, get it to you, and I trust colleagues might be of interest, again, it would take some time for us to go through the process, working with our general services and economic development folks, but I think it has merit, and again, we're blessed here in this community, but I'm sure there are other community providers that might, you know, have an interest in doing business with the county that would, you know, be inclusive in their workforce, and, you know, certainly receive some, you know, credit for that in the process of seeking to do business with the county of Sacramento, so I'll just offer those as comments, and I'll leave it in good hands. All right, unless there's anything else coming for the board, we'll next be in session after Thanksgiving, December 6th and 7th both, I anticipate those are going to be very full agendas. Likewise, December 13th and December 24th. Yeah, see, I'm getting, we're listening. I was 14th, I'm sorry. I misplaced the two, it was only a one, okay. All right, and with that, we'll adjourn this meeting, and have a good rest of the evening, thanks.